You guys good? Take good. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. If you please rise for the pleasure of me. Okay. I'm going to move up item 10 for the senior center update to now. And what I will do is I will defer to begin the discussion to Mr. Massey.
What would you like? Oh, your mic's not on either, by the way.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, I saw this on the agenda. I did not have an idea as to what this item referred to. It said senior center update. I certainly got no correspondence from yourself or the town administrator to advise that I'd be speaking on this today. So what would you like me to speak on?
I don't know. You said it was urgent that I put this on the agenda.
I absolutely do. There's a lot of things about the senior center which I can certainly jump in. I think, well, I think this board has discussed at strategic planning meetings that I think that you want me to discuss, and I will guess that this is, I mentioned it while I was running this position, and I mentioned it time and time and time and time and time again to this board. I continue to reference the capital improvement needs of this community. The capital improvement needs, that will be creeping up on us very quickly. As you understand, the Facilities Master Plan Committee voted to send an intergenerational center to conceptual design. It's already funded, already allocated monies. I was, I voted against it. I am in favor of more of a senior center than an intergenerational center. The reason is, is because, one, we just built a beautiful new high school that we can use for the younger portion of our population. We have other spaces as well. You could use your town hall, gym a little bit more, et cetera, et cetera. I think intergenerational is a buzzword, in my opinion, that I'm not sure what it'll bring. I honestly think it'll bring a money pit to this town. I think that we will be responsible for insurance liability, maintenance, operation, and staffing of this building while we're already in a very tough financial situation. I do know from senior center staff, seniors in town, council on aging, which Mr. Wallner, I understand you are liaison to the council on aging, yet haven't attended the council on aging meeting here. So I'm happy to speak to it. Senior Center, I took a tour. Mr. Mark Hall, who's on the Facilities Master Plan Committee, made a great recommendation that the committee, you know, take a tour of senior centers and intergenerational centers around us to understand more of the appetite that we want. What do we want? And you really can't grasp, grasp something, excuse me, grasp something until you walk in and understand what's really tangible. On Thursday, I toured the senior center of Wilmington by myself after work. I understand Mr. Hohberg, Mark Hall, and D W Director also toured it all individually, separately, which we could have all gone together. But I met a woman, Terry, and she's the director of the senior center in Wilmington. She gave me one full hour to tour that building. And I was blown away. I mean, I walk in there, I was blown away by the beauty, and I was so excited. I sent an email to the committee after, including some of my board members, letting them know that I am so excited for what we could build here. It excites me for what we could give our community. And regardless of, some letters and a transcript that followed me that I don't care about seniors, well, you can certainly follow my card to the senior center, and I'd be happy to tour the buildings with you. So I want to bring this up because this board also spoke at the strategic planning meeting about our thoughts on intergenerational center versus senior center. And I think I got some support from this board for a senior center. But we've got to get the wheels moving. I am frustrated when people say that the wheels of government move slow. That is not true. That is, you know, this select board has the power to move those wheels a little faster if we want. We just need to push it. So senior center update is, I'm doing my own due diligence. I also helped push this committee, the Facility Master Plan Committee, in setting up that tour to the Wilmington senior center. So trying to continue to push the committee to resolution of what we want, unfortunately, into generational center, which may or may not be great, right? I'm just thinking more fiscally responsible. Wilmington senior center, beautiful, heavy timbered framed building, all one-story, which Terry from Wilmington senior center was so happy and so adamant about pushing. And, you know, the look on her face really gave me happiness to say what we can bring to our community. But fiscally responsible wise, I do think a senior center, more in the, I've thrown out very, very rough numbers, more in the $10 million range compared to an intergenerational center, which could push you $30 to $40 million. So, you know, we need to pick and choose, really. This town needs to pick and choose, and this board needs to aggressively prioritize what we want to do. I know we spoke about a fire station, which is probably priority number one, and the senior center, which is not far behind. So we've got a lot to choose coming up. But the other thing with the Wilmington senior center is about 18,000 square feet, costing about $18 million to $19 million, about $1,000 square foot. That's what you're going to get. That includes soft costs and hard costs, which is hard construction, as in what gets put in place, and soft costs, which is get the building, turn it upside down, shake it, whatever comes out with it, along, you know, a lot of furniture, fixture, and equipment, as well as owner's project manager fees and architecture fees, being in soft cost, which brings it to about $1,000 a square foot. While the Wilmington senior center is about 18,000 square feet, and while beautiful as can be, might be too big. Certainly too big for what probably North Reading needs. I do think that North Reading needs a one-story senior center. I think that is critical. But a little bit to the senior population here in town. Not only do we have a growing senior population without Martin's Landing, but then you add, however many condos are in Martin's Landing, you're just putting a lot more seniors into our community, which provides more demand. So while our building is aging, and I understand it's a historic building, so we need to go through historic district hoops, you know, and you know what? North Reading might need to shuffle around some services. We might need to shuffle around where people's homes are, homes, you know, town hall, their senior center, their library. We might need to move some things around, but we need to push it because the more we wait and the more things don't get on the agenda, which thank you, Mr. Chair, is important. So I appreciate seeing a lot of support here tonight. Clearly, the community feels the need to come here to express their support for this line item, which I didn't know where it was somehow. But I want to get my colleagues out, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I just want to say hi to everybody and thank you for coming. Hi. Lots of familiar faces and lots of new faces. So welcome, and just know that we absolutely want to work towards a senior center. I think we can all say that collectively. A lot on our agenda, you know? There's a lot that needs to be done in this town. So, but don't think for a second that that's not in our foresight.
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, so let's just start with, the highest priority right now is to take care of the fire station. That is going to be a substantial amount of money that the town has to fund. That's going to take a major effort for us to say yes to that. It's a safety issue. It's not really an option that we can just kind of put that off. That needs to be taken care of. On the question of the intergenerational versus a senior center, if you go to the Lexington intergenerational community center, what you'll see is that what is in that building is parks and rec, senior youth services, and vet services. Exactly what we're talking about right here. So if you go to that, what you'll find out is that the seniors use the building from about nine to three, and then the kids come in from three to nine. And so that center is being dual purpose. You don't have the kids there at about the same time that the adults are there, and vice versa. So instead of it being a senior center where it's just used during the day and shut down, it's actually being used around the clock, which is a better use of that space. I'm still for an intergenerational community center, but I do know, absolutely know, and I've been studying seniors in this town a lot longer than I think anybody else has, and I've done studies on it, I do know that the senior center needs to be addressed. But the biggest thing we have to address with the senior center or intergenerational community center is how we're going to pay for it. If we don't have a way to fund it, we can all talk about niceties, but if we can't find a way to pay for it, then it's just a pipe dream. At one point, the state said, Brad Jones told us there's going to be $10 million earmarked for us to do that. I haven't heard about that in eight, nine years, so my guess is it's not coming. So what I'm looking at is how can we develop our commercial base to be able to earmark some of the commercial-based development in order to fund an intergenerational community center or a senior center? I'm not arguing one way or another, but I do think the intergenerational community center has a lot more value than maybe has been said so far. So I think that's pretty much what I'm saying at this point.
Thanks, Joe Barry.
Well, first of all, again, I wasn't sure, update, I wasn't sure the agenda item was about to begin with. Again, I just saw it Thursday, and I saw something on our Facebook page, "Come and support the senior center." I had no idea what...
Turn up your mic, please.
I can't turn up the mic.
You really can't?
No. There's no vote. So again, I had no idea what this agenda item was going to bring. But the board's concern and commitment to address the senior center hasn't wavered in years. I mean, the ability to pay for it is what's been the biggest impediment. But I do know that this board, four of us anyway sitting here, did give the Facilities Master Plan Committee a charge to look at the intergenerational center concept and come back with some conceptual designs. And again, a lot of that was driven by the fact that the legislature had earmarked $10 million for the project. And conceptually, an intergenerational center, as which pointed out over in Lexington, works very well as far as transitioning the use of it from one group to another, and maximizes the value of the investment scheme. And again, we had talked about when we had the opera money first coming, you know, should we be investing some of the opera money in the third meeting house right now? Again, while it's not an ideal facility, you know, we've got, one floor you're being utilized, and upper floor not utilized at all, and the basement's still available. And I know that the Facilities Master Plan Committee is also looking at that facility for, again, future expansion and use, as I stated before. I think it's important that we utilize the facilities that we have first. If you don't have any land or place to put some of these other municipal facilities, it's expensive. Wilmington spent $18 to $19 million for a beautiful facility, there's no doubt about it, it'd be wonderful to have, you know, where are you going to put it and how are you going to pay for it? And I agree with Mr. Wallner, and I think the majority of the board here, that the fire station needs to be addressed first. And we can only tackle so many project, capital projects at a time if we're going to do it either within the budget or even if we're going to ask people for an override for it. So, you know, our commitment to the seniors and our desire hasn't waned one bit. It's our ability to pay. If money wasn't an issue, we wouldn't. So, I mean, to me, at this point, you know, we should be investing in the facility that we have first and foremost, so that it can maximize the use of it. If we should be, as we're doing now, utilizing other spaces in the community, such as the church space or the Masonic Hall to run programming, we shouldn't be curtailing our programming because our facility doesn't meet the needs. We should be expanding our expenditures to meet those needs. We don't have a physical plant to do it right now. We don't have a location to put it right now. And again, I'm not so sure we have the money to do it right now either, where the first priority is the fire department. So, yeah, great to talk about it, but, you know, I'm still waiting to hear the results of the reports from the Facilities Master Plan Committee as to what have they come up with? Because we gave them a charge. Well, find out what it's going to cost, what it would look like, conceptually, conceptual designs, and that hasn't been presented to us yet. I understand it's imminent, it's going to be coming shortly. And then we get into the discussion of, okay, this is what's going, this is the conceptual design for it, this is what the cost is going to be, then is it something that we want to put forth for consideration for the community, or do we want to pare it back to just a senior center? And that's okay. This is for future discussion. But there was a clear charge from this board for the Facilities Master Plan Committee, and I understand you're a member of it, Nick, but you've been there for nine months. These people have been at it for a while now. And I am so, I'm anticipating we're going to have a report shortly, and I look forward to hearing what they have to say. And I also look forward to potentially looking at just a senior center if that's more cost-effective and we have a place for it and we can afford it. So, but the commitment of this board has never wavered. We're all frustrated with the facilities that we have and that we offer, and we're frustrated with the ability to deliver the programming that's needed and deserved of the seniors in our community, and we're working at it. We're trying to, we're trying to address it. So we'll do, we'll continue to do our best and do our due diligence and make a response from the people that have volunteered to look into this thing, and the engineers and architects that we paid money for to give us a report, and we'll be getting that shortly.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chalmers?
Just to add one last comment, I do want to address a couple of things. Couple board members spoke about the ability to pay for it. The ability to pay for it is asking you folks for the money. I'm certainly not one to raise taxes, but good taxes, a good raise, a good purpose of raising your taxes is never an issue. And I think this community would strongly support us asking for funding for a good cause. You spoke about the needs of the seniors and the needs of the senior center, and what the programming that they do. That building does not serve the current needs that they need. It doesn't. You want, you, there's not much you can do in that building because of its historic designation, which, you know, we can get around internally, but how much are you going to do, and where are you going to put the seniors in the meantime, and where do you put the park? And I seriously think that that piece of property and that building is not best for the senior center needs, especially with coming down the pike with more seniors coming to the community. You know, I want to touch upon intergenerational. Intergenerational sounds amazing, doesn't it? I was a huge fan of an intergenerational center until I looked more into it. Until I looked more into, Mr. Wallner wants to run it all day and night, well, that's your tax dollars and operations and maintenance and staffing. Intergenerational, what they also want to do is they want to take up about a third of the building for town hall services, for town hall offices. So, intergenerational, and I told this to the board so they understand, intergenerational really isn't the right title to put on that building because, well, we're moving part of town hall into that building. So it's part of a town hall, which would still be used in this building. There's not a lot of thought to it, and it concerns me, the money pit, that it could be. Senior Center Wilmington, again, they have ideas to utilize that space outside the senior center hours. They can rent it themselves, but they wouldn't be renting from the Masonic Lodge and renting from the Alder's Gate Church, right? So now we can start making money back. I think, I really urge this board and the community to continue to speak up and continue to show up, and I will continue to be your voice, and I'm happy to. Thank you.
So I think a couple of times I've brought up that has it ever thought to disenjoin the senior center from intergenerational? And again, here's the lens I'm looking at it of. Pragmatic, what can be done? I think everyone's heard me here on various issues that I voted in favor of, even though I disagree, because I thought they were just uphill battles where the probabilities were against us. That's how I'm looking at this. So I do agree that we need to see that report because we need cost, we need to compare the two, right? Who knows what the numbers will be? I think the spread's going to be pretty significant, based on what little bit of research I've done, but I want to see the numbers. However, I do feel that having some preliminary thinking in one way, shape, or form on what a backup plan, that may not even become a backup plan, because I do think that sometimes the, even when we want something, the cost is too much to bear. Everybody does this, like you may, and then it becomes a question of, everyone will say, am I going to use this or not? But that's like further down the line. But I do think that, in my own opinion, seeing the finances, agreeing that we need the fire station, it doesn't stop there, by the way. This is stuff that we've had time to plan around. Let's not forget that the next Chestnut Street is right around the corner, and it could happen when we all go home tonight. That's just, that's just true with all the different bridges and boroughs. So you have to keep that in mind as well, that we could wake up to a $3 million disaster tomorrow, and that's just the way it is. So that's what I always, that's what keeps me up at night, not the stuff I know we need to pay for, the stuff I don't know we need to pay for, right? And that, and that happened. It actually happened exactly with Chestnut Street, that we were high-fiving that we're going to push it back two years, and then we got a call from the state that says, we're closing it down, thank you for playing. It's exactly how it happened, literally to the T. I laughed. I knew, Mr. Gilbert goes, guess what? I go, they're closing down Chestnut Street. Right? And it was literally, what, a week from the time we talked about it? So I do think, though, that we're going to end up, if we want something, so the seniors of today can use it, not when I'm a senior.
But that's only a couple of years down the road.
(laughing)
Stay on the board.
Stay on the board. But again, it's because I think we're going to find out that, just seeing from what other communities have spent, that just a straight senior center, modern, one-floor, whatever you want to call that, whatever style that is in the commercial world, where it's accessible, where you don't have to worry about the liability of somebody, you know, all that stuff. And I'm not an inspector, so I don't know any of that, but I do know that first floor works. You know, there's a reason why almost every single, single-family home now is built with, in anticipation, that when the people get older, they're going to move into the one-bedroom suite on the first floor. That's actually now the building design of almost every single-family home, because they figured out, well, eventually, they may not want to go up this stair. Just honest, right? So I do think that that is where we're going to end up. And I stated in strategic planning, I get what you're saying, Mr. Wallner, I get the facilities, but coming from someone who has four kids, you can tell this is definitely unbiased, they got enough places they're going to be able to go. So this is not like, it's not self-serving what I'm saying. Like, it would be for me to say, I'd like another place for them to go. I think it could be the opposite, where it's like, I'm just trying to say that, right now, from personal experience, okay, let's say tomorrow, we have the sensor generational center, it just popped up, it's just there. I don't see how I, my son's still going to go to the football field, De La Bento, and then something at the gym. I'm just trying to see where, at what point I would say, let's go to the sensor generational. I'm just being honest, right? As someone who has, this is personal experience now, like this, I live this every day. So that's my only concern, where, let's say we even had the money to do it, it would just, I would hate that we spend all this money and then not get used, which is always a possibility. It is. And I, and I feel like also, in reality, I'd like to see, I'd like to see an example not Lexington, which is a city with a lot more people. Like, that's just, like anything else, right? We don't have, I mean, you know, if for all we know, they're pretty close, for all we know, they've got people scattering in from Belmont and Arlington, which is not out of the question either. Where here, I haven't heard anybody say I'm going to North Reading from Reading for extra communal activities. Sorry. You know, just to be honest. But, you know.
To have a really fair discussion about the intergenerational, you really have to bring all the services.
Anyway, I'm just giving my opinion.
All of these services, their enrollment, if you will, is well over 100, because not every kid does sports. Not every, not every kid does the school activities. There's a lot of kids who want to do their own thing, and that's what we have Bell and for doing these services, and it's well over 100 people, and it's growing, who are active in that.
That's a fair point.
So I'm not, I'm not in fear that we are going to be having our kids have too many places to go. I hear the exact opposite.
So here's what I think we should do. This report is imminent on the intergenerational, hold on, just so we don't go into circle mode, which we love to be. For those that don't attend our meetings regularly, we love to get on the hamster wheel here. So I'm trying to keep us off it for tonight. I think when this study comes back, which is very close, I think at that point, after the sticker shock of the price tag weighs, which I'm assuming it's going to be big, just because everything's big now. I mean, I mean, you can't put a slab of concrete down for less than a quarter million, so I can only imagine what this is going to come in for, right? I think at that point, though, to your point too, it's like, this is what it costs, this is what the proponents say, this is why we think it's a bad idea. We, unfortunately, we will have to spend some money, right, to get the design for a straight senior center, or maybe we could take that into a generational center and dumb it down. I do not do this for a living, so if I sound stupid right now, I'm sorry, I'm just speaking, you know, my terms. And then we compare. But then, at least, this was a very initial discussion of that I do think that, looking at everything, a straight senior center should be on the table, just because it's probably going to end up being cheaper. And again, if somebody told me at the end of the day that we can afford $10 million now, or spend 25 in five years, again, I'm just looking at the fact that, and I say this from a school, no one's getting any younger, including me, right? I do not mean that in insult, just so everybody knows, you know, so.
I'll keep the, I'll keep the, the average age of the board.
Yes. And I dropped down the average age of the board substantially, and then Nick came around, and we really dropped it down. So.
No offense.
I'm glad it went down there.
You keep looking at this end of the table here.
So, Mr. Hohberg, I will let you speak, even though it's not a public hearing, but you are in the Facilities Master Plan.
Could you go, could you go to the microphone, though?
Oh, yeah, but can you go there so everybody else can hear?
Yeah. I'm convinced these lights don't work.
Will that mic close to you?
Say what?
Will the mic close to you? I know you don't like them.
Abby Hobart, Chairman of the Facilities Master Plan. I don't think anybody would knock the idea of having a separate senior center necessarily, but I think that we do not want to have, get lost in the mix, the Recreation and Parks Department or recreation, because the parts of the intergenerational center that serve the rest of the community include, as Mr. Wallner said, youth services. It also includes veterans affairs. It includes, obviously, a lot of things for, from toddlers up, but furthermore, it also includes activities and stuff for the average 50-year-old. All right? So it serves a broader range group, and I don't think they should be left out of the mix. And maybe it is a recreation center here and a senior center there, but now you're building two buildings, all right? And the Recreation Department has a very, very small cape at the Wheeler Barn property that has two small classrooms and a kitchen, and obviously, if they didn't have the use of the town hall gym and some other facilities, really would not be able to perform as well as they currently do. The other problem that they've had is that they can't really grow their programs and offer more because of space limitations. It's the same story that the senior center has. And so it's fine to consider two separate venues, but let's not, let's not forget the other two-thirds of the town. And when we have all the info, those intangibles will definitely come into play. I'll only say this, I will take another quick thing, because we do have a 7:45 public hearing about whether or not we're going to reauthorize the food network. So I, it's the Verizon Public hearing, cable hearing. Sorry, joke went over, but. So any final comments from the board? Mrs. Gonzalez?
Could I just add? So we have this, the facilities that has been being looked at. I just want everybody to know that we're constantly thinking about how we're going to do things here. It doesn't go past us. I had early on talks with the town administrator, with the Y, who are trying to expand. I had early on talks with the town administrator, with the Y, who are trying to expand. They're, they have no more rope in Reading to do the things they want to do and they are trying to expand themselves. We've talked to them. I mean, that's a far-off thing, but but just know that we're constantly always trying to figure out how we can make things work and if there would be a place that they could come here and that would give us Y opportunities, transportation, you know, seniors, children. That's far off and and Mr. Massey has gotten involved also in those talks and you just never know, but but we're never looking anything away. We're constantly, constantly trying to make things work and and get something to happen for you guys. So just know that, know that we don't ignore it.
What else? Just say, my biggest focus is to pay for things is you have to do commercial development and 100% for, you know, improving our facilities and giving the seniors the options they need to be able to enjoy what Kim Benzelli and her group are doing. They're doing a fantastic job. It's always been a long-term issue. I've been studying this for a long time and I want to see it go forward, but I realize the bottom line is if we don't have money to pay for it, it's not going to get done. And so all I'm really thinking about is the best way to support the seniors and the town is to come up with commercial development and we have plans to be able to do that.
This is the senior center update plan item, but Mr. Chair.
One last one.
One last item is what is, what is the next step? So this was a great discussion. I've been begging for this for months, talking about intergenerational versus senior. We are moving forward with intergenerational, that is fine, we've got the money already set aside, that's good. This this conceptual design is going to come with a price, it's going to come with a bunch of boxes really on a piece of land that is question mark on where it's going, because that's all conceptual design is, is just boxes on a, on a, on a piece of land. What is our goal? What is the next step here?
Doesn't this go?
Are we?
Mr. Roberto will have an answer.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask a quick recommendation is, do we bring that conceptual design and that price back to this board for this board to decide if, oh, $40 million or $35 million, yeah, yeah, that's, that's just not going to, it's not going to fly. Or, you know, and then do we, are we allowed to change directions at that point? Do we, you know, bust a vote on that?
Through you, Ms. Chairman. And my suggestion would be that we, you know, and this would be directed to the Department of Public Works, which is overseeing contractors with the advice and consent of the Facilities Master Plan Committee, but asking that in addition to that conceptual design and cost estimate for an intergenerational center, that something very similarly be done for a senior center only. I think that that could be done at the same time, very close there too, and included in the scope that we're talking about. It could be a small change order that we have some funding in the previously approved article to address so that that comes to you as one of the alternatives to consider along with the rest of the facilities master plan. That way we would keep it all moving forward and we just very clearly have that as an alternative for the board to look at.
That's good.
I like that. Thank you. Okay. All right, well, thank you. Hopefully, I'm not, because we're going to probably talk about this in the house here once we have those numbers in public hearing.
I mean, I just think you've got all these seniors here and I think some of us have input as to the things that go on. We have a liaison who never shows up and I'm up there every day of the week, you know, and at all these facilities that the veterans lunches and that, the seniors need to have some say in it.
Hi.
You know, I gotta, I gotta.
Mr. Chair, we have, we have public comment, you can let everyone.
Hold on, one stop and correct. Public comment is going to come after, that was partly why I moved it up, just to make it convenient as well for those that don't want to hang out with us for the next couple of hours. So, and that's when you can say, but there will be, I've learned that when we try to spend $500,000, there's like 15 public hearings, so on this, we'll probably talk about it for a while, just to be honest, but at public comment, you can, anyone can make any statement of anything they want this board to consider while this process is going.
Okay, I apologize.
No, no, no. So the public hearing, Mr. Roberto.
That would be my, my recommendation, we go to the hearing, since we did advertise it for 7:45 PM. I think that we have some introductory comments that we prepared for you, Mr. Chairman, to lead us in. I'll ask Attorney Jeff Blake from KB Law, Town Council, to come forward. And Peter, are you here too, or are you online?
Peter's right up there.
I feel really important.
Peter, if you want to join Jeff.
I've never had prepared remarks.
That'd be great. Right at the table there. Thank you.
Can you start reading?
I, I think, yeah.
Okay. Good evening. These are prepared remarks, I feel really professional tonight, I've never had these before. This is a cable television renewal license public hearing, convened according to provisions of the Federal Cable Act at 47 U.S.C., Section 521, and of the Massachusetts Cable Statute at MGL, Section 166A, and DTC Regulations at 207 CMR, Section 1. The purpose of the public hearing is to help the select board of the Town of North Reading, Massachusetts determine whether Verizon New England is in compliance with its currently existing cable television renewal license, which was granted by this board, and whether the proposed license meets the town's future community-related cable needs over the term of the next renewal license. The Cable Advisory Committee has conducted meetings to determine its needs and with the help of council has negotiated license that it believes meets the requirements I just spoke of. I will begin by offering a copy of the public hearing notice that was published recently in a newspaper, local circulation is the exhibit to this hearing. We can make copies if anybody really wants one. I'm trying to make this as lace-born as possible, I'm trying. I will next introduce those board members or officials overseeing the renewal process.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're joined by.
Introduce town administrator.
Oops. Myself, I think everybody knows the board members who are here. I'm going to try your name, Peter, Peter Zawistowski. Peter Zawistowski, a longtime member of the Cable Advisory Committee, who has worked on this on your behalf and on the town's behalf as a volunteer. Again, joined by Attorney Jeff Blake, who sort of came in toward the end to help close things out. I think the thinking was, Attorney Blake could just do a quick overview of the terms and then that maybe Mr. Zawistowski would fill in anything for us. Does that, that work?
It works for me if it works for you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Administrator, thank you guys for having me here tonight.
As you probably know, I'm with KB Law. I've been doing this cable licensing now for about 15 years, me and Bill Hewitt. Bill, and I'll say this, unfortunately, is retiring. I'm sure he's very happy to retire, but I'm very sad to see him go. But in any event, so as you correctly pointed out, the purpose for our hearing tonight is to determine whether or not the current license is in compliance, whether or not the licensee is in compliance with the current license, and whether or not this new license meets our future cable needs. Whether or not it's in compliance with the current license, I've spoken with people here, I understand there are very, very few complaints. So I think you can take that as a yes for that. Whether or not it meets your future cable-related needs, we sat down with your Cable Advisory Committee, worked with them hand in glove, put together what is known as ascertainment. You sit down and say, hey, what do you need for the next, we typically do it out 10 years and I'll tell you in a minute why we do it 10 years. We sit down with them, what do you need, what are your, what are your expenses going to be, what are your capital needs? And we come up with a, with a figure and we've done that in this case. We then negotiate a license based on that. You've got a couple of licenses in town, but your next one expires, I think, in 2028. So we kind of look at the old licenses and try to increase them if we can, where necessary. So the new license, I don't know if you have the executive summary, but I'll just go through it very, very quickly. The first one that I wanted to highlight for you is gross revenues. In the gross revenues, which will later come in because we get 5% of gross revenues, we've also included advertising in the home shopping channel. Believe it or not, by, by including that in the gross revenues, we actually increased the money that we get. So we were able to do that. The second one is the term of the license. A license in Massachusetts, the original license is 15 years, renewals can be up to 10. This is a Verizon license. Verizon for the last four or five years has only done a five-year license. We've pushed, we've asked them to go higher, they'll only do a five-year license. As a result, we've been able to negotiate with them a couple of things. They do a five-year license and they had a termination, unilateral termination clause after three. We've tried to negotiate those out, they won't. So instead, we've been able to get some concessions from them. Number one, there's a capital grant that typically goes throughout the life of the license and in 10 years, it's, you know, 10 times. Because they can terminate in three years, we have negotiated where we get all of our capital money in two. Signing of the license, first anniversary, second anniversary, we've got all of the capital money that, that is for the entire five years. We were also able to, these firms will match what the other licenses have. We've been able to, because of these, these concessions that we made on that end, we've been able to negotiate additional 15% because of, you know, their termination clause, their, their shortened period. The, the cable, Verizon will continue to provide us with free drops, meaning to here and everywhere else, and free basic cable service for all public and school buildings listed in Exhibit A of the license. It's the same ones, I believe it's all the same ones as the last license. They're going to provide us with three SD-Peg channels and if you want to know the nuts and bolts of SD, I'll turn it over because that's not me. And they will also provide one HD. There's a process that we have to follow, we have to notify them in 270 days, they'll provide us with that. So I, I think your cable advisory and I think the people that are doing the cable really like the HD. As I indicated earlier, there's a cable, a cable grant out, a capital grant, I'm sorry, out there of 86,250 payable in the three installments that I'd indicated at 28,750, all paid within the first two years of the license. And then there is the 5% of the gross annual revenues, which include the home shopping channel and advertising, and you get 50% per subscriber, which it's in the license, but that's also in the statute, so it's, it's, it's nothing that, everybody gets that. The other, the two that we typically negotiate are the 5% and the, and the capital grant and we've got you all the way up to 5%. So there are some other things in here, indemnification, insurance, et cetera, et cetera. Most of that is actually dictated by the statute, so a lot of the stuff we, we aren't even able to negotiate in or out at board level. So that's basically the license that you have. We've worked with your cable advisory and in our opinion, it's a good license and it will meet your future cable needs based on, on what we understand from the cable.
Thank you. I will now ask if any written letters or emails addressing Verizon's performance or our future needs that should be accepted exhibits, made a record.
I checked with the staff, we did not receive any.
Thank you. I will now open the hearing to comments from members of the public, if anybody wishes to speak on this.
Just the cable?
Yeah. This, this, oh, this is the cable. No? Okay.
Can we ask Mrs. Zawistowski if he's got anything?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I missed that.
Because he's worked very hard, he's a volunteer.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. That was me skipping over that.
Yeah, it's been a wonderful trip, let's put it that way. Just to let you know, I've been keeping track and Verizon keeps track, it has to send us reports on not only outage, but difficulties they have with the system that last more than so many hours. And they, other than, you know, car meeting, telephone calls and a couple of light starts, they stay up very well, so.
Well, it's great to know.
That is, so if there is any problems, we can contact them because I think we're just sitting around right now. But other, other than that, there has been only the NORCAM, which is the Public Access, Government Access, Educational Access, and they're the ones who are really running all the access channels. Rob Carone is probably a familiar name.
Yep.
Face here. And, you know, I've been together a couple of times and we have agreed upon some things and we're just going to proceed. I think the only thing he was upset with, 270 days to get it, the HD channel, but 270 was a max, he said, when I talked to Verizon. It's just covered us.
We're talking about the local channel, right? Some doesn't look like 80's VHS.
You're going to be in high definitions. I guess.
Crazy.
And we're going to keep all the channels scanned, get them down below, so. Nobody misses out because we switched to HD. And that's about all I can give you on words, other than it's been, I love the legal part. It's been really good. I think they're, they're a great company to deal with.
Thank you for that, because I think that's the most important thing, reliability, you know, because it can become, it can also become a safety issue.
Yes.
So for a lot of systems, alarm, there's still a lot, so thank you. Is anyone online?
There was one chat comment that came in from a, a question about the senior center. Senior center were to be rebuilt elsewhere in town and next.
Wait, 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 time out. This is about the public, this is about the cable.
He's getting.
Oh, it is?
Yes, yes.
Wow. It's a pretty good parlay.
Would it be rebuilt elsewhere, would they be required to provide cable access to a new building even if it became an intergenerational center? I think the answer is no, because we don't know the location, we wouldn't be built at. But I can tell you that going back to the last agreement, we included the so-called Wheeler property as a location just because we thought at one point there could be a building constructed there. So I think we would have an in, it's not a guarantee, but it would be an in. If we find another location, we certainly can approach Verizon about working with us on it, especially if we're able to take a location off of the list. But we did, if I recall, there's no last place, we added that location to it.
Sure.
I will keep this brief.
Appreciate it.
Jim Ganna from Nine Way Drive. So Verizon is, has been telling us for about three months that they're going to replace our, our boxes, our cable boxes.
Yes, everybody in New England would have changed out, I understand. So there's a little backlog in getting them and getting the units manufactured.
But it pops up, it's just the box is going to show up someday and it'll be up there at a point in time.
Yeah. Then they're not too bad. They're, if you can plug it in to the TV, it'll give you a rest of the direction.
Thank you. Last question is, is there are two HD channels, one is the Bruins, the other one is the Celtics, which on our community connection here in North Reading is a weekly, someone may tick off about the fact that it doesn't work. Is that something that Verizon has reported that to you guys?
I think that was in a licensing agreement with the providers of it, of the events. They have lockouts on various people.
So if I go to a standard definition, it sucks.
It can be there.
It's not very good, but it's there. If I go to an empty, it's just, is that?
It's very strange, yes.
It's a Verizon issue?
No. Verizon is just a carrier. They're, they get what they get delivered.
Thank you, I think that is, thank you.
Thank you.
I wish I could, you better know.
Norman Kelly, 33 Newland Road, I've got a Xenetic, thank you. Competition is great. They both charge way more than what we get for it, but that's not for this venue. I would just like to do a call out for NORCAM. I think NORCAM do an awesome job. They don't get enough credit for what they do, it's a thankless job. They sit in the background for terrible hours just according for posterity, or posterior depending on where you're sitting. But in my case, it's invaluable because I watch every meeting from home, the comfort of my home. When I get frustrated, I can turn it off and then I can go back to it.
And you can turn it off four hours later and we're still there.
And replay is the greatest thing that ever happens. So I would just want, again, this is for NORCAM, I just want to call out and say how I've aged out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Thank you. Anyone else? And you can follow them on Instagram, too.
Yeah. Mr. Jim, I'll just add, just NORCAM was brought up, I intended to bring this up anyway. We talked in a call earlier with Peter and the Town Council, Mr. O'Leary. We have some housekeeping that we do need to do to renew an agreement for a cable access provider. Our agreement with NORCAM has expired by a few years at this point, so, you know, I'd want to make folks aware, we'll be working with the Cable Advisory Committee to go through that process. Certainly has nothing to do with the quality of NORCAM, it's about making sure we have a current agreement with them. They also lease municipally-owned land at the David Tapper and as well as to make sure we get that updated. So if folks hear something about that in the community, including folks in NORCAM, has nothing to do with the performance quality of NORCAM, it's got everything to do with getting an agreement in place properly over the next few months. Thank you.
Is there any other business regarding this?
Mr. Jim. I just, again, want to acknowledge Peter Owstowski, and Gil Herlberg, and your other members of the cable advisory committee. We're going to hopefully tonight get two more members to join you in your new work. But again, Peter and his group have spent a long amount of time over several months working on this agreement, and worked with town council, brings it to us tonight for ratification and approval. So we urge colleagues to support.
Great, okay. Thank you. Hearing to all the business, I now declare the cable television public hearing closed. Before we vote any other, we're going to.
Yeah, I don't think you asked the board if they had any questions.
No, no, this is next.
Okay.
I'm just following instructions.
Yeah.
Now, now we get to deliberate right here. Yeah, so, Mr. Massey.
I'll start. I just have a couple of questions. I mentioned to Mrs. Gonzalez before we came in, I said, I never thought I'd get so many Verizon emails as a selectman. They don't solicit that when you run, that's for sure. But.
Want to mention others?
I do want to thank representative from the cable advisory, the liaison, Mr. O'Leary, KPLaw, thank you very much. Did you see any holes that we could fill, any gaps that could benefit the town more in the negotiation?
Not at this time. I'm expecting cable television to change constantly.
Yeah.
And I think that's where we're going to negotiate a few items.
Okay, thank you.
I can also tell you that, you know, we represent a lot of the communities, and we represent a lot of communities in cable renewals. So, you know, we have banged away on these guys, and we know, you know, we've negotiated these things, and we know where we can get, what we can get, 15%, that kind of stuff, two-year payment. So I think we've done the best we can do here. And this is very consistent with other communities. Now, understand, capital grants are different. Capital grants, you have to show your need, your need is different than the community down the road. But, you know, all the other stuff in there, the terms are in line with all of the other ones that we negotiate.
Understood, thank you. And thank you for the volunteerism from both of you. Are we able to separate, I'm sorry. Are we able to separate costs of these buildings, understanding that we have different buildings? Is there any way to separate those out? As in, if we wanted to pull some of those buildings off, are we able to do so and separate those costs?
A question I haven't asked, I put it on my list.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it'd be interesting to know. Thank you. That's it for me.
You mean by disconnecting some of the town facilities?
No, I'm not talking, I'm saying switching accounts. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure the answer is yes. I'm just curious as to if you're able to separate costs of, hey, this, you know, providing service to this building costs X, providing services to this building costs S, and if you're able to break those out if the town were to elect to do so.
Anyone else? Okay. Do we have a motion? Oh, no, actually, I'll just read this.
There is a motion, Mr. Massey hasn't proposed. It should be an updated motion.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, I move pursuant to the authority granted by General Law, Chapter 166A, Section 2, that the North Reading Select Board grant a non-exclusive cable television renewal license to Verizon, authorizing it to continue to operate and maintain a cable television system within the public ways of the town of North Reading, and has provided more fully in the final executed copy of the proposed license to become effective upon execution by both parties for a term of five years, a copy of which is before us tonight.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure seeing you guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilberto, we'll quickly before, I'm going to jump all over the place today, just, but we're going to quickly do the public hearing at eight, because we're already 10 minutes over, and then I can step back.
Thank you, Peter.
So I got to read the meeting. Okay. Public hearing, annual town meeting date. The North Reading Select Board will hold in-person virtual public hearing on Monday, February 25th, 2025, at 8:00 p.m., 8:11, in the Town Hall, 235 North Street, in room 14, and via virtual technology, to receive public input on selecting dates for the spring and fall annual town meetings in accordance with the North Reading Home Rule Charter 241. The hearing may access virtually as follows, all these things. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is a hearing that is required under the town's charter. It's intended to give the public the opportunity to be aware of the participation in the hearing when we set the annual town meeting dates. The way we handle this is to generally consult with North Reading Public Schools regarding their facilities and the use of their facilities. For the annual town meeting, we used to go with the first Monday in October, June. That did present a conflict with a number of activities in the school building that week. So we've moved in recent years to the second Monday in June, which is what is proposed here, it's Monday, June 9. And then similarly for the fall annual town meeting in October, we look first to the first Monday in October. If there's a conflict, which there can be with a religious holiday in early October, we look to the third Monday, because the second Monday is a state and federal holiday. In this case, Monday, October 6th was available. It did include a copy of the holiday listing in there for the board, I know it was many pages.
Lots of holidays.
I wasn't looking to overwhelm you.
Everything's a holiday.
I was having a recent conversation with Mr. Massey about this. We have very prescriptive charter language that seeks to avoid any conflict with a religious holiday. There are many holidays that have come to light. We generally will consult with town councils, we think there's a question. There wasn't a question in this instance based on the dates that we saw. And so we've confirmed the availability of the facility, and we're recommending these two dates. The one thing I do need to say is I know there was some comments that I've heard in recent weeks with regard to the location in the middle high school we have town meeting. We have.
Chair?
Yeah.
They're outside, I can't really tell anybody.
Inside, too.
Don't let me use a hammer.
That's what it's there for.
Thank you, ma'am.
The gymnasium is available for both dates. The, there is already a performance scheduled in the Performing Arts Center that we're not entirely sure will allow us to access it for the June town meeting date. There isn't a conflict in October, from what we understand, it's available. We're going to try to work to see if we do decide that that's the direction we want to go in, how we might be able to work something out. But I did feel it's important to bring up that there's already an event scheduled. It appears it could be a week-long use. I would really caution against going into a further week out in June for the town meeting, because we're getting really near to the end of fiscal year. So we will look further into that so that we know, better understand our options. But I do feel like I ought to at least let folks know that.
For that, because I do agree with, what I believe Mrs. Mullin brought up a couple of weeks back. And you can comment on it again, because this is a public hearing, so if you need one second. Maybe if we do decide that we're going back to that, outside of when we expect, you know, everyone to come to the town meeting for something, maybe if the school knows that that's, the expectation's back to that, right? Because it was, it seemed like it was always that, and then it changed for COVID. Pre-COVID, it was always out of room. So meaning if the expectation's that, they're like, maybe, I'm not saying that the school will defer it, but maybe knowing that if there's a performance or something they have to do, they know that, well, the town's going to be asking for this date, so maybe this is not the week to do it. So if we decide that, just to let them know that we're going back to that, you know.
To be clear, it's their facility.
I understand, but they'll do us a solid if we ask nicely.
If we could give them.
I don't think they want to go down that road.
If we can give them advance notice, we'll certainly try to. Again, I just, where it came out at the last meeting, I felt like I ought to make clear, there's no guarantee we'll be in the BAC for this year. That's all.
Okay.
I'd just like to add that I agree, too. I think it was a better venue, personally.
Do we have many seats?
With the Performing Arts?
No, most of the seats are in the performing arts.
It's fewer, but we needed the space because of COVID, just to base apart, that's why we moved it.
Is it like 500, 600 something? That's pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, it was never an issue. I think when the school was brought up, it was an issue when we had overflow rooms.
Well, most of the issues that we've heard over the, over time with using the Performing Arts Center is the elevation in the stairs. So getting down, back and forth, people find a, no, 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 I'm just talking about even getting in and out of the seats. Are pretty difficult. I mean, it's built for as a performing arts center, so you go in, you get your seat, and you wash the things in there. But people coming and going, it's difficult. It's difficult for some people to maneuver the stairs there, so the gym is actually.
Well, the good thing is it seems like we got one and one, so then we can take another. One's going to be in the gym, and one's going to be there.
And we don't usually determine the location until we sign a warrant. But, you know, at the moment, the Performing Arts Center does not appear to be available for June 9. And if that attire, we, I think, we might get the challenge.
Okay, go.
Just one other comment on performing arts, the audio in there has been horrible. The gymnasium has been much better from an audio point of view. So if we can correct that, the auditorium would be much more acceptable, but in the past, it is.
As far as using the microphone. All right. The other thing, as far as, if we have to go to a second night, how are we looking for as far as a facility? Again, last year, we went back-to-back nights, which worked out pretty well. But again, I don't know what the facility's availability is for being a town meeting in June. Has a potential to run long.
So, so hold on, let me do this. Let me go to the public, and then when we close the public portion of the town meeting, we can talk about whatever. So, Mr., well, first I'll start here. Ms. Philmore?
About town meeting?
This is about town meeting.
Okay, well, I'm coming to say, in regards to town meeting, I think the center is a better situation. The gym, having worked in all places, including the old high school, the, LGA, as we used to call it.
The performing arts.
Is a, thank you, a much better place, yes. Some of us have to walk down the stairs when we have to give the voting into the people coming in, and that, for the count, Sue. There is a big dip in those stairs, and it's kind of tough on some people's legs. But you've got better acoustics in the performing arts center. You don't have people climbing up those bleachers where you've got people, I mean, I've seen a couple of times, people, younger people, tricked. I mean, so, safety-wise, the LGA or the performing arts center, thank you, is probably better. So you can hear it now. I mean, that's just my own personal opinion.
Comfortable.
And it is comfortable.
Respect to the school, to be quite honest with you, we've said it for 60, 70 years, the town citizens paying for that school.
Do you mind just going here, just so everyone can hear?
We, too quietly.
Ms. Philmore is a little louder than you.
That's because I use my school bus. Step it up.
The school has been paid for by every citizen in this town. And I think the normal respect that would be given from the school, and I don't think they wouldn't do it, I believe they would, would realize the importance of town meeting. And I think the fact that it should go back to the school, we pay for it, the town paid for it. I believe, to be honest with you, when people are more comfortable and they're spread out there, it's a calmer group, and I think it's only for, I think we'd have to go back to that. And I think people then, you know, are all sitting in a certain section, like the high school being this side versus that side. So I think it's just a no-brainer that we do it, and we think we'd have a calmer group. Thank you.
Imagine if we could get some wine in there, too. Wow. Paradise. Anyone else online? Mr. Gilberto, please.
I see many.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hair, public portion of the hearing, and anyone? Select, Mr. O'Leary?
No, I was just concerned about needing a second night. In ensuring that we're talking about availability, particularly in June. Just want to make sure that we have that covered.
Okay.
And again, I think the next night seemed to work well for people that were there. I know we used to do Monday, Thursday, if you went to a second night.
Yeah, I think it's a good point to have that bookmarked.
Yeah, just, we can look Thursday.
I mean, if there's going to be a second night, I'll go back to Texas.
But it seems to be, the dates that are being proposed seem to be normal.
Anything over here? Mr. Ozil. Okay, I don't have anything. There's a motion, correct?
There should be a motion to approve the dates, yes, for two dates.
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the Town of North Reading Charter, Section 2-4-1, I move to set the dates for the 2025 town meetings as follows. Monday, June 9, 2025, and Monday, October 6, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Gilberto, I'm going to go to public comment, just because although I feel that our select board members are never long-winded with board member reports, I'm not going to take the chance, yes.
There may be someone here for Dollars for Scholars that have.
Do you want me to do that?
Maybe I'm going to do that first, if that's okay, I just think they've been waiting. I know everyone's been waiting, thank you, all for your patience.
Thank you. And you can come up.
Kathy, do you want to come to the microphone and?
Hi.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Ashigali, I'm the president of Dollars for Scholars in North Reading. And we're going to be running our phone-a-thon, March 10th through the 13th, at the high school. And I wanted to get it on the board, and I think she has a proposition that she wants to do.
There you go. Whereas the North Reading Dollars for Scholars is a group of hard-working, dedicated individuals, and whereas the NRDFS members have devoted both time and talent to the difficult task of seeking scholarship funds for deserving students, and whereas NRDFS is planning its annual phone-a-thon for the week of March 10th to 13th, 2025, where high school students will contact all North Reading homes by phone and mail, seeking pledges to the NRDFS Scholarship Fund. And now therefore, we, the Select Board of North Reading, hereby proclaim the week of March 10th to 13th, 2025, as North Reading Dollars for Scholars Week, and urge all citizens to open their hearts and their purses to the benefit of North Reading students who want to continue their education. Is there a motion for it?
There should be a motion, I believe.
Please.
Motion, yes.
Do you have, is there any more comments?
You don't have any.
But you can read them.
Anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I shall move to proclaim March 10th to the 13th of 2025 as North Reading Dollars for Scholars Week.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion?
It's less than a week. It's less than a week. It's less than a week, but it's okay. Let's proclaim it anyway.
I think it's, I think it's great.
It's two weeks.
Two weeks.
Do you want me to change it?
Hello?
Yeah.
It's March 10th to the 13th.
Yeah.
That's two weeks.
That's four days.
It lasts for less than a week.
It lasts?
It's four days.
It lasts for less than a week.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's in two weeks.
Oh, yeah. It's in two weeks. It's in two weeks.
Anyway, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make my annual plea to people that didn't support Kathy and the group that have been dedicating a lot of time and effort and energy over the years to raise money for local students. And my two boys both benefited from Dollars for Scholars, and they went to college. And I tell you right now, every bit helps. And it's been a while since my kids were in college, but I just remember getting the first tuition bill that looked like a telephone number, I go, oh my God.
The town's got a lot of numbers on it.
The town's got a lot of numbers on it. And, but they just, they've known it was worse since the 60s, and raised, raised over a million dollars?
Yes.
It raised over a million dollars to help local students over the years. And again, my father spent 20-some odd years in the school committee when he passed away. We set up an endowment.
I did myself.
You know, for your husband, too. We also set up an endowment, you know, through the Dollars for Scholars and Substance Scholars Foundation. And again, it's a worthy cause, it helps a lot of kids here. And I urge everybody to be as generous as possible and answer the phone, it's not spam.
No, I know.
It's not spam, and the kids who contact us do a great job. I know you have the kids do most of the outreach, and they do a wonderful job in reaching out to the community, so. So, um, urge everybody to, to be as supportive as possible. We can thank you again, Kathy.
Mr. Chairman, three. Just curious, um, how do you, how do you select who, who you grant, um, funds to? How, is there an application process?
It's one, uh, it's forty, forty, it's need, um, grades, and then it's twenty percent if they participate in the, or extra net worth.
The application is open not just for, for any high school students, it's for all students in North Reading, even if they go to the vocational school or private school.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
So for public comment, it appears that there's, there may be a lot of comments, so, and like I said, if they're, uh, if they're regarding the senior center, which we're gonna have multiple meetings over, I would just appreciate it, you know, speak your piece. But if we cannot make it too much of a speech, or everybody gets a chance, I'd really appreciate it. Um, so first I will go to the room. This is Filmer. This is definitely for, so you can make your seniors understand.
I'm gonna speak right here. First question is, have Filmer twenty-four field questions for North Reading this year? Um, first question, the facility plan, I mean, how long have we been doing that, the master plan?
Well, I can write down your questions, we can answer them later.
Okay, 'cause I mean, it's just been in the works for long before COVID, if I'm correct, and is it ever gonna get finished? That's just my first comment. Second comment is in regards to the senior center. The senior center, we're renting out places to help the crowds that we have. We have the gym down here being used on Monday and Friday from Emma Palmer, and it has a minimum of forty people most of the time. We have no room up there, so we're using down here. We go to Aldersgate, we rent that. We go to, um, the Masonic Temple, yeah, the Masonics down there, we use that. The place, we need a place. In regards to the comparison between senior center and intergenerational, being on Parks and Rec, we've been talking about intergenerational for ten years, more than ten years. And that's because, A, it's great to have kids working with the old people. I mean, we learn a lot. As an adult, we learn a lot from the kids, and the kids learn a heck of a lot from us adults. And a good township is what that is. The senior center takes and does veterans activities, and I don't know, as the liaison again, how many of those activities have you gone to? The prom, the veterans dinners, the veterans breakfast, um, you know, we do our best to participate in the town as the seniors, and we have nothing. And that's all I'm gonna say. And I think we need a lot, because we've got a lot of people here that are doing a lot of good, and they have stayed in this town. They don't just raise their kids and then move to, you know, Boston or to the Cape. They're here for their life, and they have invested in this town for a very long time. And we, as the town, should invest in the people.
Thank you. Mr. Scalata?
Uh, Mike Scalata, two forty, mine's landing. Uh, unit one oh two. Uh, so my remarks are pre-located March third, uh, budget talks with respect to the senior center budget discussion. As of today, the senior center exceeds roughly a half of one percent of the budget in dollars that equates to around two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. The senior center employs four full-time staff people. The senior population in North Reading stands at roughly forty-seven hundred people, which is thirty percent of North Reading's population. Let me say that again, thirty percent of the population in North Reading has a senior status, which is age sixty and higher. The select board liaison for the senior center is Mr. Walner. Mr. Walner, I do applaud your volunteerism to our town, as I do for anyone that sits on the town committee or board. It's commendable, absolutely. Last October, I attended my first Council on Aging meeting, monthly meeting, and since then, you, Mr. Walner, have not attended any of those meetings. You were a no-show in October, November, December, January, and February. In fact, I've spoken to a few COA members, and you have not attended any of the COA meetings in over a year. Per the Council on Aging meeting minutes, the last time you attended a COA meeting was August of twenty twenty-three. How could you possibly advocate the needs of the senior center to the select board if you aren't a regular participant, attendee at the Council on Aging meetings? Mr. Walner, to be an effective select board liaison for the senior center, you need to attend the COA meetings and engage, collaborate with senior staff, the COA members, and the friends of the Council on Aging. I'm perplexed as to why you haven't done this. It is clear that your priorities are more the rail trail than power seniors. It's extremely unfortunate, in my opinion, and I'll go further.
Well, Mr. Scalata, before you go further, is there a comment about the senior center? Because I, for public comment, just like I, we've done for all board members here, it can't become a direct attack on one member.
Mr. Chair, public comment is public.
Campaign speech.
Public comment.
Everyone stop, please. So, again, I'm just, just like it when it happened with Mrs. Gonzalez and what other people, we put it, we let it go on a little, and then we, we have to put a.
Are they trying to let it go on a lot?
But please, can.
So my, that's my comments about the budget.
Thank you.
So, and I will go further. I have attended every select board meeting since the last election. Not, not one select board member in this room that I can recall has advocated or mentioned any of the select board meetings, the need to increase the senior center budget. On March third, I urged the select board to approve more funding for our growing senior population. The demand for services and programs is steadily growing for our seniors in this town. The funding needs to keep up with the increasing demand. Our seniors built this town to where it is today. They've paid pocket taxes for decades. They deserve our respect and gratitude. The answer to our revenue issues was not a ten-point-five million dollar prop to a cap override, as some might think. If that passed, our seniors would be forced to move out of North Reading, because it simply could no longer afford to live here. The Senior Circuit Tax Breaker is a program that I support, despite what has been written about in the transcript. But unfortunately, that program only helps a very small percentage of our seniors. The senior center needs your help. I urge the select board to approve the funding increase for the senior center on March third. The forty-seven hundred seniors that live and vote in this town will be watching, and I do have a few events that I want to share as well. The North Reading Nights of Columbus is hosting a community breakfast on Sunday, March second, this Sunday, at ten AM at St. Teresa's. The Senior Circuit Breaker Tax Relief Seminar is this Thursday, March sixth, at one PM at the senior center. And the Boston Flower Market is hosting an event called the Global Family of Flowers at the senior center on March eighth, at one PM at the senior center. And finally, thank you to North Reading's Veterans Service Officer, TJ Dedeski, for his presentation that was held, uh, at mine's landing on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scalata. Ms. Mollant?
I've been on all the committees that are gonna go in, except for the veterans, all the committees that are going to go into that building. We've been working, I've been proud of working on it for twenty-five years, and each time we stepped back because the school was being built or something else. I have cheered a couple of the committees, uh, with the platinum heads, uh, probably ten years ago, and at that point, ten or twelve years ago, the LUC put up ten thousand dollars to, uh, have some work done at the Switcher Park to look to see what it would cost to, uh, put in, in the generational center there. And within a year, we had been to the committee, and the LUC, we were quoted at that time for thirty-four thousand square foot building, twice the size of Wilmington. Uh, they came out to eight million, some odd thousand dollars, and we would have to pay for, this is ten years ago, because the town was going crazy in that time. And it came up, the, the price would have been eight million dollars plus what it cost to do the parking lot. So to keep putting, putting it off, and this is not saying to any of, anybody here putting it off, I'd wanna be extremely positive today to, as much as I have, um, contacted over the years, Mrs. Herlberg, and, uh, the TA, and different people. I've worked on it for seven years with the facilities. I applaud the speaker during all the things that were up there at that time when I read the, what we were going to do. After that committee, the facilities committee was asked to come up with plans on what would be first, second, and third. And had they not been directed to do that, we wouldn't have known that the fire station was first, second might be a senior center, a facility, an intergenerational center. For years, uh, after LUC had started, Mr. Walner became a member of the agenda that was on the, um, working with the seniors and came up with a couple of years' worth of what we should do and talked about what that, that we'd do. And that's where we pushed a lot more of the intergenerational center. So yes, we had been talking about it, again, thank you for the time that you spent on it. We've been talking about it for a long time. My suggestion at this point, the facilities committee, uh, plaid, Mrs. Herlberg and people in my committee that stayed on it for seven years, it was gonna be, we thought about a two-year committee. I am asking, having been involved in committees that were on the Switcher Park Committee thirty-five years ago, and the football field, that we do not fall into the same, uh, thing that we were falling into sometimes for when things get tabled. It's because we get groups that have to be selected, X amount of finance, X amount of other people on the committee, and then a couple other people. I have to say, if you ask Mrs. Herlberg, um, she was, seven years ago, she was forty, seven years sixty, for those seven years worked on it. I can tell you what he's done to, to us and LUC when we started, who took seven years to do it. We got burnt out. Beauty of that committee was that it was not selected in finance and school committee on it. It was people that represented LUC, uh, represented recreation, LUC, and I was one of the committee that got up and said, it can't be all the members that they originally spoke of. They were all people who soccer-minded and, and wanted fields. It was a diverse committee. I am begging and thanking the, uh, part facilities committee when it comes on. There were a lot of, uh, work that was put into it, and to be honest with you, I think, but it spans over seven years. A two-year committee that's put together to come up with a plan, and that plan should be, uh, I believe, in my opinion, been on a lot of committees for a long time, and I was, should be as younger than Mrs. Herlberg when she started it, and she's aged better than I am. But when we started, I believe that it should be a committee that might be, you'd say, nine people-ish, whatever. Definitely the, uh, department heads that are going to be going in it to talk about, to have you kids talk about tonight. And again, no disrespect to, should it be, the facility be an intergenerational or a senior? We all know you'd be the senior center before you did anything. If you'd be doing intergenerational center, we had great ideas on all the things that we're going to do. To, to say we can't do it because we don't have the money, we're saying this group of nine would study and do it like you would do any other building or your house. You would start from the ground up. You would say what facilities, what pieces of property are in town? You would look at what type of things could go into the building and not in the building. I believe the facilities committee was going to come up with how much the money is gonna cost, and Mrs. Herlberg and I went back and forth on different things on, um, what comes up with it. They could come up with forty or fifty million dollars. That doesn't really mean anything, just like they, uh, they've come back with what those costs are going to cost by today's numbers. That doesn't mean we were the new group, nine people, that aren't on three committees with finance, three committees with the school, three committees with the selectmen. Your liaison's, all of you, to nine other groups, how many things can you expect nine volunteers to do? So I think if we look at people that are like-minded people that have abilities and all those things, best committee ever on was LUC because the person that was the developer was the chairperson, had no respect for the other people originally on the committee, until he found that you needed the other committee members that did other things on it. At that point, that committee is family, LUC from that many years ago. I'm asking that it gets turned going to another committee. We look at the different things, not worry about what we need yet, worry about how we're gonna do the committee. Let the committee come up with ten million dollars from a state grant, which we absolutely should be able to do. Maybe come up with some money from, uh, the other thing, but that eight million dollar thing we had ten years ago, that we could have proposed, is gonna get, at that point, I believe, five million, and we probably got faulty, and we could have got ten million from the state, and we could have built it then. So that's my, my thought, and the other thought is, because there are so many people that do not come to all these meetings and understand what every volunteer goes through, I think that we do not need to pit everybody against each other. We have to have a new group that's gonna have other people that look around. Your kids are gonna be able to sit back and they could say, what do I think? This is the best presentation we made, what an idea. Finance, you'd be able to do that, and not have to do all the work and then come up and say, okay, now what do I wanna vote on and go back and forth. I think we have stressed the volunteers, like in finance, to, to work in the school, and then wind up getting criticized for other things like, spread it out, get more volunteers that wanna come in, let them join committees like this. And eventually, you kids won't have to be going out every single night of your life, Mrs. Herlberg. They're gonna name you after Abby Herlberg, because you've been doing this so long. So I think we, we gratitude you. It's the wall that, that spent, the time you spent on it, when you signed that before. Abby, your group, all your selectmen, you can't do everything. We want you just to sit back and be able, really be able to listen. And please, I'm begging, whenever groups come in, everybody has to work together. Otherwise, you're right, you're gonna keep spinning on that dial a little.
Hamster wheel.
Hamster wheel.
Yep.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you, Rita. Always thank you.
The facilities master plan, um, started less than seven years ago, and within several months of, of hiring an architect and starting the process, COVID set in, and what that meant was that there was a lockdown of all municipal buildings. And our charge was to look at a number of municipal buildings. And so while we could do some virtual communication with the architects and engineers, nobody could go into any of the buildings. And that would include technicians, engineers, and architects, et cetera. Once things opened up, the fire station was deemed the primary project that should occur. At the same time, the other buildings within the facilities master plan were looked at from the standpoint of, uh, heating, electrical, plumbing, structural deficits, the, you know, what you could do with the building, et cetera. Initially, um, uh, LUC and Parks and Rec and a lot of other interested people, oh, probably fifteen, sixteen years ago, maybe less, um, started talking about an intergenerational center, and at that point, it had always been discussed as being at the Wheeler Bar property. Um, and that is a, a big enough site, so you could have done it. And it was with that sort of idea. They had, at the, at the time that the facilities master plan started meeting, um, I got hold of all of the, uh, many of the minutes, all of the previous work of other groups, um, and provided those to not only my committee, but also to the architects. So that we had a good idea, and the idea, and basically, the idea was that you would build an intergenerational center, which was our charge, at the Wheeler Bar property. Um, when it, when there were various roadblocks and various issues that, and other people that wanted to do other stuff with that piece of land. And so suddenly, uh, we, it, it would, it appeared that we had to design or have designed a conceptual, um, intergenerational center, um, for any place in town, no land known, um, which is, is very tricky. It means you don't have site elevations or anything else, right? And fortunately, we don't live in a mountainous village, so most sites are not gonna be all that terrible, other than the wet ones, which are numerous. And so at this point, almost all the buildings in town that were in our ultimate charge have pretty much been completed, and we're trying to finish up the facilities master plan now. Up until, uh, a few months ago, there was no talk about having a separate senior center. Uh, so we could go look at that, but, uh, that, that's not going to exactly get anything to fruition with these play. Uh, so I mean, that's where we're at, and, uh, I'm not sure when the, the report will be done, because we're waiting for the final stuff on the intergenerational center.
All right, thank you. Um, anyone else for public comment?
Again, I'm Vivian. I'm a youngster. I am only seventy. Just want to make that clear. First time I met a number of these folks was when we saw the results of a survey that was done by UMass Boston. And it had to do with seniors in the town, where seniors was going, where the town was going, and really what seniors were looking for. And one of the things, first thing on their list was taxes were too high. But then I started looking at some of the other components to it, and I reread it recently, and I searched for a copy of it, and then an opportunity to take a look at it. I think what just got said, and I'm going to paraphrase, is we should have done it a while ago. And by not doing it, by waiting and waiting and waiting, it's become ten million, fifteen million, twenty million, thirty million. And that's exactly what's going to happen if we sit on it for another year, or two years, or three years. That being said, back to last year, and the property was over and on, and some of the monies that were in there, I will not rehash that. But there were dollars in there that were not from the school, and it got denied. And I think that's the kind of thing that as we look forward, we look at, is it a separate component? Is it something that isn't, how do I put this? Isn't going to tick off a group of people within the town? And so as we move forward, and I think we should move quickly forward to town, not getting any input, I do think it's an opportunity to go back to some of the things that's already been done, some of the work that's already been done. First, as I said, the first time I contacted Rich, I had to deal with his liaison work, and it helped me find out that I could, as a senior citizen, go to school in Massachusetts for free, which I've been doing for the last couple of years. My point is that I will stop, is the longer we make, as you all sit tonight, and what it's going to cost. Thank you.
I'll, I'll stick the mic to anybody who wants to speak on this, because I'm not speaking on this. So is there anybody else that wants to speak on the senior center before I speak?
No, no, we can jump around. I'll go back. It doesn't matter. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. I want to address two topics. The first topic I want to address is the MBTA, which you had a joint meeting recently. And frankly, I have followed every meeting, every discussion on this over the last couple of years. And in fact, I've gone back and rewatched, because I mustn't make sure, refresh my memory in that people said things that they said, that they subsequently did say they didn't say, or they forgot about. And at the last meeting, which was a couple of weeks ago, it was a joint meeting, and the discussion was if there would be a warrant document where the select board, I understand, had been given the authority through the town administrator to present this as a warrant document under the ex-town leader. And then, if it was passed at town meeting, it would go back to the CPC. They would then have to have a majority vote. And one of the statements that was made at that meeting was unfortunate, because it was at the end of it, Mr. Griffin made a statement to the effect that over sixty communities out of one hundred and seventy-seven communities that are affected by this had done nothing.
Hold on.
No, no, this is important. This is important.
No, but like I said, let's try to.
This is not a personal thing.
Okay.
This is information. And it's important information, because it speaks to a bigger issue. And the bigger issue is I had lost confidence in the CPC and their objectivity in terms of being able to deal with this issue, which is a very serious issue affecting the town. So I would love to see the select board, through the town administrator, take another opportunity, perhaps take another tack on this. I have a document here, which I'll share with you, if I may be so bold.
I'm all set. Thank you.
This is from the MassGov numbers, and it shows how many towns are in compliance and how many are not.
Compliant.
And according to the MassGov website, four towns have not submitted a plan. Four towns out of one hundred and seventy-seven. The statement that was made at this joint meeting said that one-third of the towns had not submitted a plan, had done nothing to submit. Now, that to me is a very serious error, if you want to call it an error, in terms of the facts that pertain to this. In terms of influencing the people and how many people you vote, I have heard repeated utterances on behalf of, on behalf of many members saying they represent their constituency. That's great. But you can only faithfully execute your duties as an elected board member if you dutifully inform your constituents as to the facts, and the facts as they are, not as you wanted to be. That's my first point. My second point is, and I'm going to reference Miss Spillmore's letter recently, in terms of the toxic nature, that is, a toxic atmosphere that has entered local politics in this town. We try not to call it politics, because people are volunteers, and they enter, they don't subscribe to any, supposedly don't subscribe to an ideology when they run for election. They speak to what they can do and what is best for the town. Unfortunately, what I witnessed over the last year in this committee, in just about every meeting, is behavior that is not befitting an elected member of this board. And I'm talking about personal attacks, repeated personal attacks against one or other members of the board. Now that to me, I have been in this town since ninety-two. I had attended meetings since that time, not every meeting, and I've borne witness to many men and women that have come through those doors to represent our town on this board. I have never seen such consistent disregard for the, for what this position represents to the town. And I leave. Thank you very much.
Anyone on, oh.
Yeah.
You're not going to talk about the facilities master plan again, are you?
Say what?
Please go.
Excuse me?
Facilities master, please, Mrs. Herlberg.
No, no. Here it is.
No, we need the mic, though. I'm sorry, because they, no one can hear.
So I, I think that the problem with these numbers of four communities and sixty communities is based on the change of date from February to July, and that the larger number is those that have not responded yet to the state for the July deadline.
Thank you, Mrs. Herlberg.
So you might want to check that.
There was an article in.
No, no, public comment, not Q and A. I can give the definition of Q and A, and it's not it.
It was in the newspaper this morning.
It doesn't matter. This is public comment. We're not responding. Is that everyone's got to respond, and then, no. This will continue.
So while initially, when the date was February, I think there were far, you know, a handful, maybe, you know, fifteen or twenty at the most, that had not complied, but the sixty number is based on a totally different deadline, as I recall.
I'm going to go online and take a few more comments, and then we're going to move on. Anyone?
Computer just died.
Oh, no. And Mr. Gobert's computer just died. Wow.
That's a first.
I know.
There's like six of them.
Should have kept that other one, though.
I'm not seeing anything for a comment. I'm not seeing anything I like.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Great.
Really, I appreciate the feedback, and I will. So, okay. Let's see. So we're kind of picking and choosing where we're going here. Cut water. All right.
Board member?
Board member reports. We usually do them first. Mr. Massey, we'll start with you to the right. I'm going to jump around there, too. I'm just going to go around.
Do whatever you want.
Yes, great.
Mr. Chair. I want to take the opportunity, I want to take this opportunity to thank you, Mr. Chair. This, the position you're in often doesn't get, it's a thankless job, but out of everyone on this board, I want to say that you take the time to get on the phone with me and discuss issues. You are available. You are available through phone, available through text. I have not experienced that with any of the board members here. You're the only person that has really stepped up and wanted to mentor me as a new young selectman, and listened to the ideas for consideration. You sometimes maybe try and talk me off the ledge, which I appreciate, but I do want to thank you, because you listen to my ideas and you take them into consideration, and you give me the time, which I appreciate. You and I certainly do not agree on everything. We disagree on several things. You certainly know that. Some actions that may have been personal, which I will forgive, but never forget. You know that you're not exempt from being held accountable, which I truly believe that it is needed. But professionally, though, you have kept these meetings light and funny, which is nice. I constantly feel bad for your neck having to go to the left and to the right. But what I've learned as a select board member, how much I'm reached out to, what a thankless position it is, and sometimes as a volunteer, what you get publicly, and I understand, I understand how much the chair gets contacted from all angles, it's not an envious position. But to those efforts, and for this board, and for the community, as well as for myself, as a first-time elected official, I don't get the opportunity to thank you for all you do, Mr. Chair, enough, so thank you very much. I have another write-up, Mr. Chair, that I want to bring up, and some of this, you know, this is a subject, I was elected partially to think outside the box and to bring fiscal responsibility, which I continue to run on and continue to pursue. In 2017, this town voted overwhelmingly, I believe, by about sixty-six percent, yes, against candidates, against candidates being able to be sold in North Reading. I may be going against a lot of my supporters that have supported this position, but then again, I have to think outside the box for fiscal responsibility and the best for this town. Eight years later, I want to bring this up. It's not like the MBTA. It's not from an October to a, you know, a few months later, we're going to bring this back to the town. I'm waiting eight years to bring this back up. This town is in a different position than when we were in 2017. Finances have changed, and we've learned more information. I'm coming up with ideas that may create revenue or in general, help the taxpayers. In my opinion, North Reading is the perfect town for prohibiting or zoning for this type of business. We are in a tough financial position. We are able to tax the income locally, up to three percent of receipts. It provides a high revenue and additional tax money to be made on top of the commercial business needing town as we are. It does not bring riprap. It's an expensive product, and that is something, stepping out of my zone, but understanding the finances of what this industry has been. It's an expensive product. They're highly secured buildings. That's not something that typically would bring in riprap to the town. Towns around that, towns around us that do not have on our Middleton, Andover, Limfield, Redding, Wakefield, and Wilmington, those are all towns that are above us. We have an opportunity as the town, you look on a map and you see which towns, how many other towns are touching us. We have a unique circumstance where we touch a lot of different towns. Everyone's going to Wauverne, Burrica, Malden, et cetera. I don't know the other towns, if they voted or not to prohibit, or if the taxes are too high, but this would be perfect for North Reading, because, one, we are on septic, and that is not a business that would require a sewer in order to thrive. And they'll take the low property taxes, which I'm sure a lot of businesses are looking. This is the kind of business that we should take advantage of in a situation like this. And the reason I say that is because I picture north of Stop and Shop, I picture the end of North Reading, I picture it tucking away, but I do picture the ability for, you know, a lot of folks that drive in between towns, and typically, frankly, use North Reading as a highway to get from one area to the other. We can capitalize. There is, there is money to be capitalized for this town. Got to think outside the box. You know, North Reading Route 28 can sometimes be considered a highway or a route between two towns, many people cut through. There are plenty of empty storefronts on Route 28, and we need to open our town up to other opportunities that can succeed in our infrastructure and increase our commercial property tax base. People are spending their money in these other towns, and we can take advantage of that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge, tonight was the beginning of the Citizens of Police Academy that the Community Impact Team and the North Reading Police Department are doing, and I'd like to commend them for that, and always tell everybody, go online. Community Impact Team does all kinds of amazing things, and check out what they do. For new news, I'd like to bring up to the board that the 3A MBTA communities, interesting that it was brought up tonight, because in new news, the state auditor on behalf of Methuen has ruled that the MBTA Communities Act is an unfunded mandate, because the existing funding mechanisms don't meet the requirements of the local mandate law. Based on that ruling, Methuen, Duxbury, and other towns will be filing a petition in Superior Court for an exemption from implementing zoning charges. I would like to make a motion to this board that we do the same. I think it would be to our advantage if we could get an exemption because of that. It would solve a lot of problems. We wouldn't have to deal with it at all. I'd like to make that motion.
I second.
Hold on. I think I, I think that's an agenda item to talk about and then do the motion. I don't think I can do that on the floor.
Well, we can have discussion, no?
We can't, no, I mean, this is, that's too much of substance.
I can't, we're not having an MBTA full-blown discussion without the agenda item, because there's too many holders.
I didn't bring it up.
I'm not saying you did. So that's my take that, no, Mrs. Gonzalez, I actually, I'm in support if something like that could happen, but I, we got to do that the right way.
All right. Can we get that on the agenda?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Mr. Wallman?
There's a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor. Come on.
There is a motion on the floor.
Would you like to rescind your motion?
No.
I wouldn't like to rescind my motion.
Okay. Mr.?
I just need to caution that you don't have an agenda item, and that if you're in the meeting or is concerned, you can start.
Yeah, I'm not taking that.
All right.
And we do have, we do have a meeting upcoming.
On Monday. Okay. If, if that will be on the.
New business is new business, right?
But this is a motion on the agenda.
All they can do is.
New business. But this one to be expected, and I don't need somebody to wake up after he eats his ribs in Texas to break them on us. So.
I will rescind that, and knowing that on Monday, that will be an agenda item.
I rescind my second.
Thank you, Mr. Massey and Mrs. Gonzalez.
Mr. Chair, through you, thank you.
Mr. Wallman?
Yeah, so I'll kind of start here first. You know, it's election season, I can appreciate I'm going to get attacked. Little history on what I've done for the seniors. I joined the COA in 2005. One of the first things we did was to call a social services summit. And in that social services summit, we had the police, fire, schools, all the social services there. And during that, during that session, we learned that there was a thing called the CIT, Community Impact Team. And you know who wasn't invited to attend to be part of it was senior services. So in that meeting, we became involved with senior services. Senior services became a part of CIT at that time, because we were overlooked. The other thing I did when we were on the COA, because realized the COA is an advisory board, not an acting board, but an advisory board, is we had a senior summit. And in that senior summit, we had about seventy-five people come to the, to the, to the Eldery Senior Center. And the two things I picked up from that, which was very clear, that the biggest thing the seniors were concerned about in town was high property taxes and transportation. It was very, very clear at the time. I continued to serve on the COA, but became very frustrated, because the COA really didn't do anything. So Kim, and Zellie, and myself, Rita. So, Kimenzelli and myself, Rita, Parks and Rec, we grabbed a lot of people. We had monthly meetings for about three, four years, which was a grassroots effort to try to elevate the needs of seniors in our town. And we had a good success in doing that. Because as a result of that, AARP came out with an age-friendly initiative. And Kim, myself, and Jen Ford, we grabbed onto that initiative. And as a result of that, we got approval to do a study with UMass Gerontology Department, which is the premier gerontology department in the United States. Recognized really across the United States as being the one. And we did a town-wide survey with huge feedback. And I ended up giving an hour-and-a-half lecture. And it's on YouTube and you can hear it. I didn't mean to speak for an hour-and-a-half. UMass Gerontology was supposed to be there, but there was storms and they couldn't get there that night. What did we take away from UMass Gerontology study? One is, my conclusion was, we needed to focus on transportation. As a result of that study, I brought to the board that we need to have a transportation committee. The select board supported that and we now have a transportation committee, which is very invigorated and working very hard. The other conclusion that we came from that study was that we needed to have a public services director. We had an open spot of public services director. It had never been brought up before. We had never discussed it before. But I brought it forward. Select board supported it. We hired Lil and the work she's been doing to bring our social services community has been fantastic. It's been really, really good. I brought up the, oh, and then we talk about, you know, high property taxes. What can we do about high property taxes? Well, there's the CB match program that the state provides, which is good. On my work with the Tax Aid Committee and with the help of Gail Manning and the people that were there, a lot with Gail Manning, we ended up creating a CB match program that didn't exist in this town before. Now, some will say, well, that doesn't benefit all seniors. You're right. It doesn't benefit all seniors. Not all seniors need help. But for the 400 to 500 households that have seniors that qualify for the CB match, this 50% match is the difference between them staying and leaving our community. The other thing we learned from the gerontology study was that when we asked community members, Rita brought this up, is that when we asked community members, how many are going to stay after their kids leave school? We asked that question and we had a 40% rate of people who are going to leave our town as soon as their kids get through the school system. The state average is like 25%. We are way over what we should be as far as a community because we have a good community. And the reason why people are leaving is because we haven't given them a reason to stay. Because you ask two questions to people and it gets their eyes wide open. Is there life after kids? And do I stay or do I go? And when you ask that to anybody who has their kids graduating from high school, they usually are going to go. That's the 40% rate. And that's what I've been trying to focus on to correct and backtrack. So, we can talk about, and then even in the Parks and Rec, Rita and I, we did come up with originally, it was a Parks and Rec for the facility. Through our discussions, we identified that intergenerational community center was a much better program for us and that's something we came up with. So, you know, we can talk, we can talk about how I haven't been able to attend meetings. I've had a personal issue going on for two, three years now on Tuesday nights in Boston from 5:00 to 6:00. Unfortunately, that's always been with the meeting. But you know how to keep track of this? I give Kimenzelli a call. She tells me what's going on. And meanwhile, I speak to other, I speak to people and I pay attention and I do the work that I think is going to help seniors really do their job. I can't be everywhere. I don't have time. I'm full-time. I work full-time. I do this full-time and I do other activities a lot. So, I'm very busy. But to imagine that I can just, you know, just be everywhere all the time is a little unrealistic and unfair and a cheap shot, frankly. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you. And then, okay, so then from the, from the COA, Senator Sarr's office has arranged a presentation at the Senior Center Thursday, March 5th, March 6th at 1:00 PM for people ages 65-plus who want to learn more about the state's senior circuit breaker credit worth up to $2,730 for 2024, depending on your income and housing costs. To check your eligibility for that credit and others, AARP volunteers will prepare free, simple tax returns at the North Reading Senior Center this spring by appointment. Please call the Senior Center at 978-664-5600 to request a tax appointment. And Lil added to the discussion, if there's any follow-up questions about who's eligible for tax credit. There is no age restriction, only limited by the types of income and financial situations. Call or check the Senior Center website for details. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
I guess I'll talk about 3A Monday night, which is great, which is fine. And by the way, there's six communities who are not in compliance as of today.
Monday night? I'm really looking forward to it. I love any of these talks.
There's six communities right now that are out of compliance.
Can't wait.
Yeah, I know. First of all, I'd like to just acknowledge that, again, he and I can, for some reason or other, seem to know the cast of characters from generations before us. But a fellow passed away this past week, Bob Jamino, who served school committee and finance committee for the better part of 20 years or more in the 70s and 80s. But he was one of those individuals who was an impactful player in this community when it came to his personal skills, as far as being able to get along with other people, a good listener, someone who was willing to take people at their word and also consider, you know, what their proposals were. But he was just such a balancing influence in this community, a contributor. And again, lived in this town up until just a few days ago. And Gene is still here. His wife, Jean, is also actively involved in the community, raised their children here. But Bob Jamino was a smart, well, he was good friends with Bob Masseri, you know, and they were very like-minded and very like personalities, you know? They didn't have a political bone in their body and all they did was what was in the public's best interest and very analytical about things and just a wonderful, wonderful person and a terrific listener and a true contributor to this community. And again, like so many people over the dead gates who have been contributing their time as volunteers, but there are a few who stand out over time and Bob Jamino is one of them. And he lived to be 90 years old, which is a good ripe old age, but gave back to this community and did a wonderful job serving us on the finance committee and the school committee, along with other volunteer efforts and raising his children. So, I just want to acknowledge Bob's passing and thank Jean for sharing him all those years and his sons and daughters. He's just a fabulous guy and really going to be missed. The other thing that, again, I know the board members have been getting some correspondence over the last few days. Late last week, I got contacted by some people here in town and then some people dropped some correspondence off in the town administrator's office regarding rate increase and then the plan to discontinue the use of Perry's Mobile Home Park, I don't know, I think it's 142 Main Street, and delivering notices to the residents in that community indicating that they were going to terminate the existence of that street community within two years and giving the notification of that and asking them to sign off on the notification. The owner of that property is not following the rules, not following state law. And when I heard about it and Jen communicated with me, I asked her to get all the town administrator, who was on vacation, and, you know, contact town council so that these people were given just a week, basically, to respond to the notice. And again, it's basically an illegal notice. So, town councils got involved and I think that my colleagues have seen the correspondence and has talked with the attorneys of the property and told them that the move's illegal before they can issue these notices of discontinuance and ask the residents to sign off on it. There's some hoops that they have to jump through first. One of those is the local mobile home rent control board and this board. So, we're going to have some sort of a set. So, what the timeline associated with that move will take place, we don't know. The owner of the property has clearly indicated that he intends to change the use of that property and build basically multifamily homes, like 80 or 90 units in that area. So, he's going to have to go through regular processes. But before he can do that and before he can alarm the residents of that community, at least that follow the rules. So, applaud the town administrator and Jen. In their efforts to get on this quickly and get the town council, have town council quickly respond to these people. The attorney has agreed to notify the residents that they do not have to come into compliance and sign this letter of agreement and that also acknowledged that they were not following mass general laws or our local bylaws and that they're going to cease and desist and then follow through, through a proper procedure anyway. So, just again, I applaud the administration's efforts to respond quickly, town council's efforts to respond quickly. And I appreciate the residents coming forward. Of course, you would be alarmed too if you got one of those notices. And we'll be hearing more about it. So, I just want to make sure that the board is well-aware, the public is well-aware as what's transpiring. And then it will be dealt with in a public, open, public forum when the proponent finally goes through the proper machinations and steps formally notify the town that they're going to be ceasing the use of the property. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, also.
So, I do have one update, but before that, so, I have a request of this board and if we could possibly do it. So, I've been observing this chair and thank you, Mr. Massey, for the kind words. But I've been observing that this body at every single meeting starts one way and then becomes one big gotcha moment. It is not productive. Maybe if we were all professional politicians trying to get on committees at the Senate level that pay, you know, 25,000 to 50,000 a pop plus that and then great pension, the soundbite is great. But here, who does it really help? It doesn't. And I'm not saying I'm not part of it, by the way. But my request to piggyback on what Mrs. Fillmore and Mr.?
Kelly.
Kelly said is that why don't we set the example starting from here? Instead of the other way around. Instead of asking North Reading to be, why doesn't it start here? Because if I look at these select board meetings the last three, four months, I'm saying so our own board, pretty good most of the time, but then it becomes kind of who can get who based on who said why. So, that's what I just ask. And I feel like I, you're right, Mr. Massey. I've been trying to referee it as best as possible, but that's the problem. A chair shouldn't play referee. The fact that I've been doing this now, it just, it's inefficient wait time for everyone. So, again, it's just an ask. It's not a demand. It's not a command. I can't force anyone to do anything. Everyone here is an adult. I can't force anyone to like each other. But I can say that I think that maybe if we can set even a little example and try to not easily get as upset because we're all passionate and we all in our own way. Somebody once said, "Everybody on the select board, I believe, is benevolent. I just don't agree with everything they say." Fair comment. So, that's just my ask. Now, on an update, I am a, as people forgot because we've talked about so much, but I am the liaison to the ZBA. So, an update I have, which is really just reiterating what we knew. Me and Mr. Goberdo, two weeks ago, which happened between meetings, met with Mr. Yaba, who introduced us to the new developer who was actually going to be doing the 40B. We've been waiting for this since the ruling came down last January, I believe, or early February. And finally, just out of the blue, it's like, we want to introduce you to the person who is going to be resuming the application at the ZBA. There was literally nothing of substance outside of them saying, we're, this is who it is and it is, remind me the name of the firm?
Tremel Crow.
Tremel Crow, who's done projects everywhere, you know, who tells how great they are, which of course they're going to say. But then they just said that we're, they really didn't give a timeline. They're hoping to get in front of the ZBA in late April, early May. That's why as well, when we were doing liaison assignments and I was interviewing the members, I said, "Hey, it's probably going to be a lot on your plate for this year because this is coming down the pipe. And I know we've gone through a lot, but if everybody remembers, this happened right when I got in the town and it was a pretty important thing for the town." So, that's the update that really what we've been waiting for finally, I will probably proceed in the next few months where the, those taking over the projects are going to be going to the ZBA to now restart that process. As a refresher for those that were not as involved. We were going down that route in late August of 2019. And then we were given some data pretty much almost same day from the state that put us in what's called safe harbor, where we did not have to accept the project. And then pretty much in a nutshell, midway through the game, the state changed the rules and we lost. That's what I keep referencing when we talk about some other things that, you know, we were actually winning and they were like, "No way. You're not going to win this one, unfortunately." So, now it's coming back and Mr. Goberdo, I'll just defer. Did I miss anything? Because it was pretty much that's it.
The only thing I would just add is that, you know, they intend to sort of pick up a 200-unit application that was submitted back in August or July of 2019 and that that's the application they would be working off. Let's hope they know that.
It's the same exact application.
Okay, so basically the same thing?
There's nothing different. It's like, imagine if the last few years didn't happen and they're just going right back to the ZBA to go through the regular course of what they would have gone. And then it's really, it's the ZBA who leads the charge on this, you know, through the chair and, you know, they do that. And then, you know, of course, we're going to have our opinions, but it is very a quasi-independent body who has to do it. It's very like that. So, yeah, that's the update.
Just on that, once they file that application again, to rejuvenate their application, the ZBA has 180 days to act on it.
Correct.
And it can't go beyond that 180-day unless it's mutually agreed upon that they want to continue to talk about this. So, basically, you've got six months. A decision has to be made. Either they approve the application, they approve a modified application, or they deny them, you know? So, it's a, but basically, it's been remanded back to the town to say, approve something here and then you take it to the next step.
So, again, there's a?
Have we, have we as a town been projecting financially to cover these costs?
Yes, we have a pool. But here at this point?
With the legal costs?
We have legal costs.
Legal costs, police, fire, roads, schools, no? No, there's no money set aside for what we knew was coming down the pipe?
Timeout. No, no, time. I'm going to answer this. That's what you go through the ZBA to do. We just, we put brakes on it and we tried to stop them. So, now it's going back to answer those questions.
Understood. But it's been on every town meeting, Warren article, as a preparation of it coming. So, I'm wondering, have we been doing that prep work in the background financially to set money aside to prepare for this?
For legal counsel. For legal counsel, yes.
Legal counsel or the other items?
No, no, no. What was on the Warren article every year was for legal fees only. Now, if there's going to be an impact on, say, if you need a traffic signal, you know, down there, that can be part of the project costs associated, passed back to the developer. But it doesn't mean anything as far as wear and tear on a roadway or schools, your kids in the school system or number of calls you're going to have to police and fire department, by the police and fire department, theoretically. Again, if you're going to have 200 units there, they're going to be assessed a certain amount of dollars and the tax dollars are going to go to paying for public services, right? So, I mean, it isn't a total loss. But again, I don't know what the proposal's going to be now. I mean, there were all sorts of discussions way back when as to whether it was going to be an 55 or whether it was just going to be rental or was it going to be condos? So, I, until they refile their application, you don't know if it's going to be rental property, condos? Age restricted?
We kind of temporarily stopped them in their tracks. So, that, and now we have to go through that motion to answer some of those questions.
And then what happens is?
Well, hold on. We're not going to do that tonight because if we get into 20L, we're never going.
No, 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 no. I just want to clarify that, you know, what the process, then if they want to negotiate with you, they will. If they don't, they don't have to.
I just care, thank you.
I would, thank you. Okay, okay, let's move on. So, before we even get started? So before we even get started, you know, because I'm just the most popular guy in the room anyways, we tonight will not be voting on the mobile home rental control board. And here's why. We have identified when this first came up that Mr. Massey expressed interest because he wanted to, you know, fill a void. And then also Mr. O'Leary expressed interest, that's why you see both names. But this is one policy that actually it does go against. But I don't think negative consent on the fly of this board is appropriate because of everything going on with the mobile home rental control board. So on March 3rd, we will have it as an agenda item. And we will vote to either stay, to, to keep that policy or overturn it. And if we overturn it, then we will vote at that point. So we can move on to the cable advisory committee. No, no.
No, it is, it is, it's amazing the pivots that you make.
It's not.
To adjust around me.
Mister, it's not, it's not.
It is.
Okay, you're the pivot. I'm sorry.
No, you're the, you're the chair.
I set the agenda. We, yes, and I'm saying that I feel it's appropriate that on this one, we will vote. And if we vote to overturn it, then we will vote if, if you'd like to be on. No, that's.
No, 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 I just wanted.
Can the board discuss it? It's on the agenda.
Just let the colleagues know.
The appointment's on the agenda, not the policy.
Okay.
No, again, I have no problem discussing the policy.
But you're gonna keep it short, right? Because we're not talking about this.
No, no, my, my recommendation as liaison was to not take action on the proposal. You know, the, the applications that were there. Because again, I still believe that we shouldn't, board members shouldn't necessarily be sitting on this one here. But in addition to that, in speaking with the chair of the control board, and I said, I didn't ask him for a recommendation because it's an awkward position to be in when you have your appointing authorities looking to be sitting with it. You know, I said, the, the choice would be to have someone other than a board member to be a member. And I wish, I would want the position to be further advertised.
But I respectfully.
To be further advertised. As we're trying to.
No, we're actually, Mr. Massey.
Absolutely.
Wait, time out, guys, guys. We're actually trying to change the rules so if this board sees fit, they will put one, they will put one or two vote members actually on it if they see fit. So we're actually trying to clear a roadblock so we can get there. But we're gonna have the discussion as an agenda item. And then it's gonna be there, everyone's gonna say their piece, everyone's gonna say their piece, and we're gonna vote. And if three out of two board members, like we always do, we change the policy, we are going to immediately after that vote on, just like we do everything with road call, on the mobile home rent control board. No, no, there's no, but that's it.
I'm fine with putting it on.
Please, please.
I concur.
I get it, everyone's really happy that I'm putting it on.
You gotta let the elected officials talk in town. Now, cable advisory.
Can I have a motion for the cable advisory committee, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointments as full members to the cable advisory committee for infinite terms.
Indefinite.
That's not what it says.
This is infinite.
It's too open. Mr. Chair, I rescind my, my motion. How would, how would you want this to read? Because I'm not, I'm not making a motion for indefinite terms.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointments as full members of the cable advisory committee, it should be for indefinite terms. Jared Sharp and Michelle Patel.
No, not indefinite. Indefinite's forever.
No, infinite is forever.
Infinite, yes, thank you, thank you. Yes, you're right.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Waller. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, as we heard from the chairman of the cable advisory committee tonight, we have a couple of vacancies here. And these two individuals have expressed an interest in, in serving. We've spoken with them and they're willing to serve and we're grateful for that. And that, again, the next contract isn't up until 2028. But in the meantime, there needs to be something negotiated with North Camp. So I would recommend the appointment of Jared Sharp and Michelle Patel.
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Mr. Waller.
And again, Mr. Chairman, just in relation to the indefinite terms, I will have more conversation with, with the chair of the cable advisory committee to maybe work out.
The way we did with the other one?
Like we did with the other one, to try and work out staggered terms. The reason this was done was in the past because, again, there is an awful lot of interest. And when there is, we like to hold on to people. And generally, people have served on this committee for ten, twenty years, which is great.
That's good.
But there's nothing wrong with staggered terms.
Yeah, we should, we should change that.
So we'll, so I will work with them to try and work amongst themselves as to who wants to watch staggered terms. And then we'll come back with those appointments.
Any further discussion?
No, I'll vote yes under the bounds of trust of Mr. O'Leary.
Road call, Mr. O'Leary?
Jared Sharp, Michelle Patel.
Mr. Waller?
Jared Sharp. Mr. Patel.
Mr. Massey?
Jared Sharp, Michelle Patel.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Jared Sharp, Michelle Patel.
Chair, Jared Sharp, Michelle Patel. Okay. Please, Mr. Massey, and you can wrap the fire votes.
Yep, yep, yep. Sorry, just a change.
No, I'm taking time, I'm taking.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the January 23rd, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Is that law? Thank you, Mr. Breckin.
Second. Motion, motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Waller. Any further discussion?
What was that?
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the February 3rd, 2025 meeting.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. No, Mr. Waller. Any further discussion?
No, I think these minutes are as amended too, which is great.
Any further further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Review upcoming meeting schedule.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I believe there was a question about board members' ability to meet on April 7th. And that there may be a conflict, one or more conflicts regarding April 22nd. So I think that's why we had this on there.
So you said April 2nd.
Seven.
We have the 7th, and what was it, the 20th?
The 22nd is the other one.
The 7th and the 22nd. The 7th was Monday, April 7th, or to be determined.
Can we go over the full schedule, please?
Sure.
As in the packet?
So the next meeting, Monday, March 3rd, then Monday, March 17th. Those are both regular meetings of the select board. The Monday, March 31st meeting would be a budget meeting in place of the Saturday morning budget hearing for DPW and Public Safety Department budget hearings.
Sorry, what day was that again?
Monday, March 31st.
Do I have that?
I really did like the bagels and green cheese. I liked the morning.
That's a budget hearing?
I thought it was refreshing, different. Anyways, new chair.
Yeah, why aren't we doing sandwiches?
What time, what time is that at?
So we had Monday, March 3rd, Monday, March 17th, regular Monday night meetings. Then Monday, March 31st would be an evening meeting. We'd probably start between 6:00 and 7:00 PM to, with a focus on the police, fire, DPW budget hearings.
Okay, so that's a, that's a regular.
You'll be here for that?
For which one? March 3rd first?
We can, we can change it to a Saturday.
That's new, I don't, we didn't hear that before. I'm not saying it's.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a lot of that either.
It's okay to go down there, just can't do it on.
So March 31st, are you saying?
No, no, we should, we should let Mr. Waller attend, just trying to make, make adjustments.
I'm going from the 21st all the way to the 29th order.
But the, the 31st.
Is a Monday.
Oh, what am I saying? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm terribly sorry. Okay, yes, no, I can do the 31st. I'm sorry, so cross over on the calendar. My fault, I can do it.
Excellent.
My fault, sorry. And my notes indicated that the next regular meeting, which would be the first Monday of April, Monday, April 7th, that we flagged it as a to be determined because there may have been a conflict on somebody's part. I'm just not sure whose it was.
What, what was that one?
Monday, April 7th. That would be a regular Monday meeting.
Yeah.
The notes here indicated or to be determined. I'm not sure if there was a potential conflict somebody had.
I have it, I have that one now. I didn't have the 31st.
I didn't have the 31st.
I didn't have the 31st. I have the 17th. And I have the 3rd. Okay. 31st I did not.
So the 7th is good?
Yep.
The 7th?
Yep, I have that.
And then we were looking, it would normally have been the 3rd Monday, which would be Monday, April 21st. That's a state holiday. There was discussion about meeting Mon, Tuesday, April 22nd. I thought, Mr. Chairman, you may have had a concern with a conflict that day.
That's school vacation week.
It is vacation week, yeah.
I would suggest if we're gonna move to the following week, that we look at Wednesday, excuse me, Wednesday, April 30th.
What, I mean, I may be able to make the 21st work, but I won't go till next week.
The 21st is of April is a state holiday, so we're not, we're not able to meet.
What's the holiday?
Patriot's Day.
Oh, yeah.
I will be, I will be gone from the 26th to the 3rd.
The 26th to the what?
The 3rd.
Of May?
Yeah.
So it sounds like we're still tentative for the 22nd? Must be here for community from the, is that it?
No, you said the 21st you could make happen.
Oh, 21st.
No, but we can, it's a state holiday.
Oh, that's a state holiday?
Yeah, so 22nd.
The 22nd?
But you'll find out soon. I'm on next week. Okay, so question mark.
April 22, question mark?
Tuesday, 4/22.
Remaining scheduled meetings are two, are Monday, May 6th. It says Tuesday for some reason. It's Monday, May 6th.
It's Tuesday, May 6th. Tuesday. Yeah, it's because.
Monday is the 6th.
So we would be meeting Monday, May 5th.
Monday, May 5th, yeah, I don't know, both the dates.
I had down the 6th as well.
You did. Did somebody have a conflict with the 5th?
No, the, the 6th is election day.
We wouldn't be meeting on election day, that doesn't make sense.
Cinco de Mayo. All right, nice. I'm gonna go out on the border and I go vote.
The board's regular meeting.
He will help me decide what the, what the circle.
I think last, Mr. Gilberto, the board met the day before the election.
Yeah, usually, it usually falls that way. First Monday and Tuesday is the first, first Tuesday is usually election day.
Cinco de Mayo?
How can we celebrate?
What's that? I have ideas.
You can't.
It's gonna be your last meeting.
Appropriation.
It'll be my last meeting and not be a celebration.
Really? Yeah.
So we should be celebrating.
I think there will be dancing.
So.
Monday, May 5th.
This might be a corona on that.
And Monday, May 5th, I have May 19th.
Monday, May 5th, Monday, May 19th.
Yeah.
Okay. As we get closer, we would talk about scheduling and organizational meeting.
TA report.
Just wanna let them. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Gilberto, during the TA's report, are we allowed to ask questions in between? Okay.
Sure, so first let the board know that I've entered into a contract with the appraiser group in the amount of $750 for an appraisal of 9 Mill Street, which was an action item from a discussion of the RFP. There's a meeting between the town and the appraiser group on Friday this week. Once we receive the actual appraisal, we'll place discussion on the board's agenda for final approval of the request for proposals. And we can make a determination if we wanna set a minimum reserve bid number. We already spoke with regard to Perry's Park. It did include, include copies of the notices that I received from both town council and from residents. And eventually, we got an actual communication from the property as an owner. That, that came in, I believe, yesterday. The executive office of Housing and Livable Communities approved the town's action plan relative to DPA communities and 3A zoning. I attached a copy of that correspondence. The planning commission, I believe, will continue discussion of this matter at their next meeting on March 11th. I have been participating in discussions with the North Reading Public Schools and the North Reading Diamond Club regarding the potential reuse of light poles and equipment that's currently at White Stadium in Boston. At the moment, the working plan is for the Diamond Club to pay for the poles and equipment to be delivered to the DPW yard. The town would issue a license to allow the equipment to be stored at the DPW, but it would remain owned by the Diamond Club. Would not accept ownership from the Diamond Club until a later point in time when more detail of the project is finalized. Sort of a missing piece right now is getting confirmation from the city of Boston that these materials are in fact bound for North Reading. Make sure they're fully aware of that. And that was something I was advised to do from my conversation with the inspector general's office as well. And then finally, I have authorized deficit spending for snow and ice removal this winter. The deficit stands at $267,974.06 with roughly a number, another $120,000 in outstanding purchase orders. This would be above the $175,000 that was appropriated at June town meeting. We're currently carrying $450,000 as a projection to be used from free cash at this town meeting to cover the deficit. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Hopefully no more snowstorms. Any questions to Mr. Gilberto?
9 Mill Street, Mr. Chair, I brought this up to you offline. Actually going back and thinking about an appraisal, does this board, even though it's only $750, and I'm not getting into a long discussion on $750, but I, I, I wanna make sure that this board, you know, is, is in unison with wanting to recoup the money that we purchased for this property. I think there was a fruitful discussion on what we purchased for, what is remaining. And I, I strongly urge this committee at that time to sell the property at the price that we purchased it for. Excuse me, set the bid, minimum bid at the price that we purchased it for. I don't think we should be in business to lose money, buy a land to lose money. So my suggestion and my concern is that, that appraisal might come in below the price that we purchased it for, which might be leveraged against us for a purchase. My thought would be to not do the appraisal and just, we have the power here, set the bid number at what we purchased it at and, and let the, let the market dictate. If it goes, it goes. If it doesn't, we, we come back here and we discuss again. But I, I just feel like, you know, $750 going through this might actually hurt us.
Is there any, is there any motion, correct?
I mean, we, we have, we signed up an agreement to have the work done. I, I don't know that any work has actually occurred, but we're scheduled to meet with them on Friday morning. I know there were folks here who were advocating for it to happen. If you wanna change course on that, you may wanna put that on agenda, I, I don't know.
What was that purchase price?
700.
No, I'm just saying, you know, we don't have to make.
700 was the question.
We don't have to make the motion, I'm just saying maybe be able to give direction to our town administration. Say, actually, the board's going in a different direction. You know, hey, we'll save you time, you can now go get your coffee on Friday morning. And Mr. Gilberto will get some time back and his day. I mean, this is, this is a no-brainer, we're not gonna lose money on this property, right?
I gotta imagine.
That we're not gonna spend money to potentially hurt us later, right?
But I gotta imagine, and I don't know, but if I, I've never bought off a town, but if I did, I, I think the first thing I would do is get my own appraisal, almost instantly. I mean, I would. I mean, unless you wanna wing it, which I guess you can.
Not, not when it's an auction. Mr. Chair, I think we have the power here, I think we, you heard the same thing I heard.
I'm not in the real estate business, I don't know what that house would get appraised at.
For me, an appraisal would help and that, I, I'm still there. But, um, so, yeah, no, no, it's a, it's a.
If this appraisal comes back at $500,000, what are we doing? Are we sending it at 500 or are we wasting money?
I just don't think it's gonna happen.
Buy the lot for 500.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know?
I just don't think it. I feel like I, I'm still where we were when we discussed it, that I think an appraisal would just give us a, a real idea. I feel like, I, I, I'm still where we were when we discussed it, that I think an appraisal would just give us a, a, a real idea. It's hard to make a decision without it.
Why? We're not buying the property, Mr. Chair. We're selling it. We're saying, we don't want...
What if it's appraised at 9?
What if it's appraised less?
I know, but you don't know. It could be one or the other.
You said, you said...
Then we make more money. If it's appraised at 9, then we sell it higher.
That's a...
It's a gamble.
No, no, it, it's a gamble, but if you, um, again, if we set...
You don't have to gamble if you set...
If we set the price of $700,000 and the market out there is 850, you know, so, you know, then we get 850 for it. If the market for it is only 650, we don't get a $700,000 bid, then we have to revisit it, right?
Yeah.
I don't have a, I don't have a problem with, personally, you know, just, okay.
I thought of that thought. I, I just, I, I want, I'd like an appraisal. I've never, I, I just, I'd like an appraisal.
I mean, the, the only benefit of the appraisal is if it comes in higher, but if it does come in lower, you know, if it comes in higher, then you can, you know, set your, your price higher. But again, if you, if we price it at the $700,000 which we purchased it for, which, uh...
If we get 700, we're happy.
Well, yeah, you didn't lose anything.
If we get more, we're happier.
And then you, uh, and again, if it becomes a bidding war because the value of it is better than that, you'll have more than one bid, you know?
Just trying to save some nickels to turn to dollars. Thank you.
No, I think it's a good...
Any other questions for the report?
No, but has he got a clear...
No, we're gonna keep going, but we're already authorized for the vote.
No, we... It's not true.
I think if the work's not done yet, can we, is it a contract?
Like, sign a contract for it.
It doesn't have, as long as they didn't perform the work. And public, they did not perform the work, Mr. Chair.
I don't know that they haven't done it.
No, no, it's not the look, what I'm saying is that, let me, let me just ask before we go any further, okay? Do three out of the five members want, not, not want an appraisal? And then we can just, that's it. I want an appraisal. How, what's your feeling?
I think I'm looking at it.
What's your, I, you just said it. Mrs. Gonzalez?
I mean, I think if it's a contract and it's gonna be an issue, then we should go forward, but if it's not an issue...
Forget about the contract. You want the appraisal. Ignore that the contract was signed.
All right, I would, I'd be okay with waiving that.
Okay, I'm not. So, so three to two? Well, that's what it would be if we wanted to revisit it.
Oh, okay.
So the consensus, the consensus of the board is, is, three members of the board is if, if you can negotiate with the person, say, maybe another day, uh, fine, but if you've signed the contract and they want to hold you to it...
And they're gonna hold you to it, then we, then we go forward.
We're gonna spend more on legal fees if you get your ass through, so, excuse my language, but...
Correct.
Not, it's not expended.
I, I understand, but you signed the contract, so...
It's allocated, but not spent, so it's not expensed.
There's a contract.
Money's allocated, but don't, he signed the contract.
Hey, we're canceled and we changed a different direction.
Mr. Gilberto?
I, I, we could certainly do that. I just don't know that they haven't already done work. That's my concern. Not, it's not the paper. It's whether they've actually done work. We kind of, we, it took us a while to get them to respond to us, and when they finally did, we jumped at it. Uh, we went to three, I think it was three folks that Danielle talked to, and only one of them actually responded to us. So, I mean, and this is coming from the guy who didn't want to do the appraisal in the first place, by the way.
I know.
So if, I think the consensus is if we can get out of that contract, then let's get out of it. If we can, we can.
Can you have that answer on the 3rd?
Yeah, I, I'll do my best, yeah.
All right. We have one more motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn at 9:48 PM.
You want to go before 10 o'clock, hold up?
You haven't, no one said second yet.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Jen?